People in the way.
I was just.
And the girls.
Janice?
I have Janice.
Caroline.
Wasn't sure.
Are they still?
Yeah, I do. That's not.
But I just wasn't sure.
So I made you go across the hallway.
Okay. So it was. But she's so. Every day. I mean, I would.
Happy to do that.
Every day.
Pretty good. She's good.
I'm happy for you. I'm happy for you guys. I already care. But. I'll be. This is for nine.
Oh.
Okay. Where did you?
Oh.
And that's.
Is that right?
And that's his. Even though he came up yesterday, he gave it to Saturday. I'm a little interested to register that he'd be coming out of the morning.
Oh, yeah, awesome.
So that's.
Yeah, he's still.
So and I just.
That's your dad. That's your dad.
Yes. You have service.
Yep. Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah. So all of those. Cause we know all that. That can.
Do you know? We're gonna start.
Amelie Siff.
Yeah. Yeah. During the meeting. And no problem. Probably be for speed. Right here. It's very. We're happy saying we don't. And they're not there.
Those are. Those are.
We are the big. On the links today.
Maybe they're the ones who do the.
They probably don't want us to.
So we talked today.
I always.
Those jokes.
Do you know Caroline's?
Yes, she was. She said she would.
Can you find yourself on here?
Thank you.
I'm admitting people have.
Okay.
There were still. The many people. No, the many people.
Oh, okay. You have a lot more than that.
They just keep coming. Are people putting in the names? Not yet. Some are, but not all of them. I'm letting them in. They're going to have to change their name or they're going to get placed into the waiting room. Thank you. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now take the roll call to the US.
President.
Emily Cooper.
President.
Joe Patrowski.
Yeah.
Caroline Squires.
Um, Lee Brew.
Here.
Uh, Janet Dykett will not be here tonight. She is in parent teacher conferences at her own. She cannot make it and she resents her regrets. Before we get started, I just want to do a little housekeeping. Yes, it is.
I'm having an memory.
Oh, hi. Yeah.
So is it there?
Sure. Okay. First things first, for those on Zoom, your first and last name are required in order to attend the meeting. If you did not put that in, you will be put placed back into the waiting room until you do so. I want to welcome everybody to our emergency meeting. Just a few words regarding community participation. When we address these current COVID situations, I will hear from the school committee first. We will have a discussion when all of the committee members have weighed in, then I will open it up to the public. I will ask the public to raise your hand. And for those on Zoom, please place in the chat that you have something you would like to say. I will call on you and ask you to state your name and please stand to speak. I will also ask that you only speak if you have something new to contribute. If somebody else has already made a point that you wanted to make, please know that we are listening and we hear you. Please keep your comments brief so everybody will have a chance to speak. And lastly, I'll ask that everybody be respectful of your fellow community members and to the school committee members. We all want what is best for our children. If tempers flare or someone speaks disrespectfully, I will use my gavel to bring back the meeting to calm and respectful discussion. Hopefully I will not have to do that and I thank you in advance for your cooperation. One other little bit of housekeeping, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as to the scope of this meeting. There are two things that we will be looking at first is considering an extended closing of school. And also the kids club, whether or not it should be considered a school sponsored activity and therefore not considered a community source of spread. As far as the the closing of school, I would like to, under the superintendent's memo, I would like to strike off number five for discussion because that does not have to do with closing the closing of school for remote for a while. That can be discussed at a regular meeting. Okay. I think that's it for me for now. Jim, do you have anything you would like to start with?
Sure, I guess I first want to start with, I would sort of further state what you were just saying. We play this a very emotional, difficult issue. And I've been a little bit, I guess this may might be the right word, with some of the tone because nobody, I don't think we could find a single person who's happy that we're in the situation that we're in now. It's very challenging. I've given to the school committee, so I want to share with everybody who's listening and to people in the audience. Sort of the, what I use is sort of a way to weigh all of the, you know, anything that comes across my desk in any situation. And this being the most challenging, I talked about a three legged stool of success. And essentially, as you can all imagine, three legged stool, all three legs have to be solid. They all have to be in the proper place in order for that picture of success or that part of success to be successful. For schools, it has long been held that the three legged stool of success, the three legs are pretty obvious. Community slash parents, students and staff who delivered the services. And so through all this whole thing since since COVID has been a part of our lives, looked at things from that situation. And try to make those decisions based upon how do we keep all three of those legs supported? Last year, I think our communities and our schools did a really amazing job in looking at all those. We had 80% of our students in school, 80% of the time. I'm very familiar with a lot of schools throughout the state. And that was as good as over 90% of the schools. There were some schools that did 100%. I don't know how in good conscience anybody could say that you could be in school last year 100% of the time with 100% of the students and say that you're being supportive of the people who are teaching. It certainly was very supportive of the students. It certainly was very supportive of the parents. Our school committee made the decision to do eight, four days a week with all of our students. My wife works in a district that did, they broke the kids into cohorts and those cohorts came cohorts came two days a week. So those kids, which is what the model was throughout, through most of the state, those kids were in school 40% of the time. As spring approached and we had a bit of a shift from COVID to the Delta variant. There was some hope that this year was going to look significantly different in terms of being in school and who could have in school. We made some decisions as an administrative team, supported by the school committee, to do and strong support from the Department of Education and Main Center for Disease Control to try and open school, open school with 100% of our students or 100% who want to attend here five days a week or full time. We are now, and part of that was based upon the reality that even though we knew the Delta variant was was posing in on the northeast area, the history for the Delta variant was that it was aggressive. And that it would hit hard, but it was moving on fairly quickly. That's what the trend had been throughout the rest of the country as the Delta variant was making its way across. And so we really started with five days a week, hoping that by the time we get through two months or more, that the numbers of COVID cases would start to wane. I've been tracking the the number of cases in Winthrop, not just Winthrop schools, but in Winthrop since beginning of, well, since the middle of July and have been sharing that with the school committee every meeting. And that number is not waning. And as a matter of fact, the new numbers got reported today and it was 16. Throughout the month of July and August, it was seven, three, four, six, so it was in single digits. And, you know, that hasn't gone up. So what that means, we're hoping things were going to relax and in the school committee, remember that back in August, we were talking about coming back with mask optional. We were talking about oh, you know, just trying to be as much relaxed, make it as comfortable for the for the students as possible. And we had a pretty good show from our medical, area medical professionals. That really warned us, they totally loved that idea, that notion, but that it was not realistic given where things were at. And I have to say, I mean, none of our, none of the outside people are here tonight, but they were spot on. They were totally right about that situation and so as time has gone on and and more and more cases have come through the issue of what more we can do, what are the things the CDC is recommending? We, you know, we reached outbreak status, which a year ago, I think it's really important for people to understand this. A year ago, the CDC would have shut us down. No questions asked, they would have said, you're done. I would say that for the grade school, because of the lack of our ability to control that spread and the number of quarantines, that would have happened, quarantine number of incidences, that would have happened on at least two occasions, if not three. A high school would have happened at least once. The only school that would not have been shut down based upon numbers and outbreak status is the middle school. This year, the CDC is committed, has been committed to trying to keep our schools open five days a week all the time, as much as possible. So instead of closing schools down when you reach outbreak status, they are conferring with us on virtually all of our cases. Melissa Brewer was over here, I don't want me to put Melissa on the spot, but Melissa could probably tell you if she wants to, that she probably confers with CDC four days out of five, if not five out of five, plus weekends. So we have a lot of conversation with the CDC. This body here chose way back in August, when we started school, that we were going to follow CDC guidelines. That because that'll become more relevant later. So when I talked to, part of the reason we called this meeting tonight was when I last spoke to the CDC at the end of last week, over the weekend, excuse me. They said, I think, I don't know that there's more we can do. You've done everything. We have pool testing, we have distance distancing, we have sanitizing, we have quarantine, we're doing everything we can. And they said, I think it's probably time that you consider extended time for remote. Thus, we're here. That's their recommendation. Ultimately, it's the the school committee. The hard part is, this is why I was saying, it's been, I've had some pretty good communications from a number of parents. And some people are really, really angry about that. And that's frustrating for me to see the anger because nobody asked for this. I'm not asking for it. None of you asked for it. Somewhere along the line, as we started school and we talk about that three legged stool of success. That stool of success is 100% supportive of our community and our parents, 100% supportive of our students and not at all supportive of our staff. So I think that's a consideration the school committee has to undergrips with and to think about. And how do we maybe shift some of that burden? We'll talk more about some of the options later, but you know, the the reality is that the school committee has already made a decision regarding Thanksgiving week. I'm just not sure and the CDC is also not sure that that is, that's going to be adequate. I think the hardest part, the thing I've heard most consistently over the last couple of days since this meeting was called and that this information was spread out there so that people could see it in advance was that we have consistently said in the school committee, CDC has consistently said, we believe the safest place for our kids and our staff is in school. That's true, except that it's not working. So I think at some point we need to think about what else can we do? The hard part, and it's not just true for Winthrop, but for everywhere else, is people don't quarantine the way they're supposed to. Somebody pointed out correctly, I mean, the hard part is there's very little wrong answers here. It's just a matter of how do you piece it together and what do you try? The if part of the reason they're safest in school is because we do distance, we have some some level of control. And if they're out in the public, then students will get together. They'll be on masks, they'll be on distance, they'll be unsafe. And that's, you know, that's the downside of it. There's no like, as I said in my memo, there's no silver bullets. But I think we have to, we've come to that point where we're saying we're 11 weeks into it, things are not getting better despite doing everything that we can. As I mentioned before, and I can go through those again. And I think we need to consider some other options. And I guess I'd just like to say, as frustrated as some of you might be, I just would appreciate that we try not to share that tonight because I, I'm also equally frustrated. But I know it's not any of your fault. And I'm sure a lot of you are very frustrated, frustrated, it's not our fault either.
Discussion? I have a, I have a question. Is is the main issue actual COVID cases? Or is it the close contact quarantining that is causing chaos and stress for staff and families?
I don't know that you can put a, decide which is one and which is two, they go together. Certainly because of quarantining, I don't think people have a have a great sense of the stress that is put on the staff. When we have, and pool testing is actually added to that, pool testing is actually working. But it's a great deal of stress for our, our staff because if you have a class of, this has happened multiple times, primarily at the grade school, but at the middle school, even where the cases are less, and the high school. If you get a class of, say, 15 and the class has to quarantine because of close contact, particularly with the teacher. And, well, actually, that's not the worst scenario. Worst case scenario is when you've got three or four kids that are close contacts. So you have 12 kids, 11, 12 kids in your classroom right in front of you that you have to teach and you have to plan instruction for the four or five kids that are at home. That's really challenging. At the beginning of the year, when that was happening, people identified right off the bat that that was, that was challenging. Like I said, 12 weeks into it, 11 weeks into the school, it's not getting any better. In fact, it's getting worse. And so that is a big issue. There's a lot of frustration in the community that's come back to me on a number of occasions about what people feel to be inconsistency around pool testing. So that's certainly a part of it. The big thing from the CDC and from me, I would say, this is where I'm coming from, is doing what we've done has not done what we needed to, or hoped it would do in terms of slowing down the spread. It's, you know, I mean, I get it, I get two or three emails a day from our, from G Ross at the middle school, high school, or from Melissa, just calling before I walked in here, another, another high school and a middle school student that had tested positive. And so it really is not a combination of one thing or another. It's, it's a culmination of everything. They're going to do the school committee. You weren't here. They're going to do the school committee.
But as a parent trying to get online, there's a maximum of 100 people.
We've just opened.
Okay, because that was the frustrating part. There's other parents trying to get online. So I had to drive up there because of that.
I just sent two people messaging me and they've given up on getting in. So have you notified people?
We've noticed, yeah, a lot of parents. We want people in.
You have 100 masks about five minutes ago. So we are able to give people masks. So if you wanted to spread that information, I would be like.
Are you guys sending out a robo-call to parents to let them know that? If I can't.
Yes, and it was multiple times. It's for me trying to get. We're in the middle of a meeting, so we can't do a robo-call.
But somebody could. I mean, you have a lot of people here. I mean, someone sent a robo-call. We're going to make it a lot, it's really important. All parents who want to be a part of this, even though it started at 4:30, we want a lot of people up to work. Should be a part of it. And they really should. So I think that would be the minimum standard that you should be doing.
Who does the robo-call?
Nobody here does a robo-call.
Nobody here does it. You don't do them when you do one?
I do not.
Who does it for you?
My administrative assistant.
And you're not able to reach that person?
Not right now, but we're going to continue.
I'm just saying it's not fair to all these parents who want to wait.
Do you want to use my gavel? Because I will. Okay. Okay, we're doing the best that we can. We've tried to mitigate the situation.
It's not the best that we can.
Well, some people, some people who couldn't make it at sixth are able to be here now. So you have to look at both sides of the situation. I'm done. We're going to finish with our discussion. Thank you for letting us know. We're taking care of the situation. Okay. Everybody will have a chance to speak. Right now, we are in the discussion with the school committee. Yes, Jill?
I'm not a robo-call person, but my question is, if I was to take in, hit my Facebook program right now, what would I tell them about they can now get on Zoom? Connection for this particular meeting?
Yeah, I guess so.
That will help reach a few people.
It will be posted to Facebook on this.
Thank you. Okay, discussion.
I have a lot to say, but I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to say first.
We can start with you, Callie.
Okay. So in reading the emails that were sent to us, both as a committee at large and directly to myself, there were a few overarching things that were common. The first is parents feeling concerned that they are employed without potentially an ability to work remotely at home. There were concerns about parents who have no childcare because they rely on the school to provide that care for their children. Some of those concerns overlap. So there's one parent maybe who has the same concern. Another big concern that was brought up was people who don't have childcare versus the amount of childcare that's available in town. Something that was a little disheartening in what I saw from parents was the complete lack of regard for what the teachers are going through. The overarching comment that I heard was, everybody stressed, get over it, it's a stressful job. I think what parents, including myself, so I'm a parent too, but I think what parents are not maybe recognizing is that the physical and mental health of our staff is a major priority. If they're not, if they're not healthy, they can't be at school. If they can't be at school, our kids are not getting the best education that they can get. As it is, we have heard every single meeting since school began, and hopefully the majority of you have been on the meeting, so you've heard this. And if not, and this is the first time you're hearing it, I hope you take it to heart. At least at the grade school. I can't speak for the middle school or the high school. There have been so many staff shortages that everyone is all hands on deck. They are all covering any classroom that can be covered in order to make sure that school can continue. So the thought of it's a difficult job, get over it, needs to be thrown out the window. The COVID aides that were hired to help students. The COVID aides that were hired to help students who were falling behind from last year and the half a year before that are not able to do their jobs because they are busy filling classroom assignments. Jolene is amazing at keeping that school running. But she is running on the shortest shoestring right now. We are often at a point where we might need to close school just because we don't have enough staff. So to think that it's a difficult job, get over it. We're already employing people who work when they're not getting paid. They're working on the weekends, they're working at night, they're working before school. That's on a normal day when there's no COVID involved. And now we're asking them, some parents are asking them to teach the students that are in front of them and also pay the same amount of attention to students who are at home learning remotely. That is impossible. There is no way that a teacher can both pay 100% attention to the students in front of them and 100% attention to the students who are learning remotely. It cannot happen. I'm not done. We've talked a little bit about just the difference between the students who are positive and the students who are direct contacts being out on quarantine. That doesn't matter to the teacher who's having to now prepare a separate program for those students to do at home. They're not just saying, you know what, go learn this new subject that I'm teaching all of your, your co-students in class. You go learn it on your own. They're having to figure something else out to do. At the end of a school year, that's an awful lot easier to just find some kind of a review for students to do. But we're at the beginning of a school year. There's not much to review here. This is for all of you. So I guess if you take anything from what I just said, that one level of our, of Jim's three-legged stool, it's collapsing. So yes, we're in a place where we're having to make a really, really difficult decision. No one wants kids out of school for any period of time and we can help it. But if the answer is a two-hour release, one day a week, in order to help the mental health and physical health of our staff and ultimately be able to keep all of our students in school the remainder of the weeks, I think that that's a small concession to make. I think one of the other concerns, Jim, that I've heard a lot is that there's, there's concern about messaging. And I think that some people maybe aren't aware or don't, just plain don't realize how much we're not allowed to share because of HIPAA. So when you're sharing as much as you can, it still comes out as pretty confusing because there's such a big backstory that you're not allowed to tell people.
Right.
And I think that if if the consumers of that information were able to take pause and say, all right, I know I can't see the whole picture and I know that Jim is working for the best for the community and the students and the teachers, what can we do from here? I think that would be really helpful. And then finally, my final thing. Second bullet that we're going to talk about, but I just want to get this out now. I did talk to Lonnie just to double check. And all of the students who attend Kids Club are Winthrop students. So I think it would make an awful lot of sense for us to consider any spread there as school spread, not community spread.
Totally agree. All of Kids Club's workers who work at, all of Kids Club's workers who go to the high school are in quarantine right now?
They're in quarantine right now? Thank you. So for those of you who couldn't hear, Caroline said the employees who are high school students at the Kids Club are currently in quarantine. So that isn't just an added level of concern. So if we could count that as a school spread, that would mitigate a lot of issues.
I completely agree. That's one of the things we want to discuss tonight. And I absolutely think that it should be considered a school activity. So I think I've said that. Anybody else want to? Joe?
No, I'll listen.
You'll wait?
I'll speak best I can, I guess. I'm conflicted. I'm on both sides equally. And that's kind of the issue. I have no answer. And that'd be more frustrating. I don't see closing the schools is going to help the COVID cases. I mean, because again, we've seen, I walked in, I walked in here, I saw 25 kids down there playing together. It's just, however, we have a massive stress on staff. And the parents do understand is that we have, we're already struggling to find staff to staff our schools, all these staff. And they're going to leave. And then what? We have classrooms, there are, we have teachers out all the time. They're getting sick, mentally sick. They're not doing a good job. They can't do a good job. Or we don't have a staff at the classroom. We have subs doing the classrooms. That's not a good education. And that's not a good future for our district. I mean, we're going to go into next year with more open positions. That's, can't go there. So I don't know what to do. I have no real answer. I know the staff needs help. It's also hard, the staff, I mean, they can work 12 hours a day. And it's very stressful. I'm also a teacher too in a different district. When you put that much time in, no breaks. Hard to even go to the bathroom. And then you're getting 15 emails from 15 different parents that are telling you you're doing a crappy job. And that's stressful. And that's meant, this meant, causes mental sickness, basically. No matter what you do, you can't do a good enough job. So I don't have any answer. I just know the staff needs help. I don't think closing schools will help COVID cases. I mean, in the sense of, they think it's going to continue the same. So I don't have any answer. I just know that, I understand. It's frustrating. I know, I have two kids in the schools and I, I don't know what I'm going to do with my kids. It's going to be difficult. I understand that piece. At the same time, our staff are not going to last. They're already, we've already had messages that they're, they're not, some are not, are about that. So we're going to be in trouble if you don't do something.
Can I share the information about the COVID cases? Because I'm not sure everybody sort of has a sense of it. And I shared this, I met with the, somebody who already seen that we were on Channel 6 last night, will be on again tonight, or I'll be on again tonight. And they wanted to know our, our numbers. And these are, these are actually not accurate as of today, they pre- add additions, but since the beginning of the year, we have eight students that tested positive for COVID at the high school. Three staff identified as positive. Two of those are shared between the middle school and high schools. So one is just at high school. We have 33 students that have been identified as close contacts needing quarantine for 10 days. And that doesn't include, we have five football coaches who were also tested positive and impacted a number of our students in our school through community spread. Middle school has nine students that have been identified as positive testing for COVID. I think what I'm not sharing is none of the dates here is, and it's not that I'm not wanting to share, I don't have the dates in front of me, is that most of these are in the last three or four weeks. We have no staff that have known tested, except for the two that are shared between the middle school and high school. And 49 students have identified as close contacts who needed to quarantine for 10 days. At the grade school, we've had 39, it's actually 40 now, total staff, that's more than that, based on, but say 40. Six of those are staff. And in all six of those situations, those staff required quarantining the entire classroom. And as I said, pool testing is working because in the last four or five situations where teachers are tested positive, up to seven kids in those classes have not had quarantine because they're part of a pool tester. I didn't, I asked Melissa and it was virtually impossible to get together a number of, presently, right now, we have over 60 kids that are in quarantine at the grade school. We have well over 100, well over 100, probably close to 150 for the, for the year. And I think the thing that people don't understand is that's not our, to say, well, you're, you know, that's, those are guidelines. Those are not recommended. Those are not things you have to follow. That's not true. I mean, we're not, we're not beating, we're not even needing this, stopping the spread in this situation, right? If we're not quarantining, we'd be, we'd have more kids that are in quarantine, more kids that are testing positive. So it's a, it's a very daunting number. Honestly, the, if you want to know the, the, the total truth from where the CDC is coming from, it's, it's very possible that they would, if it were a year ago, they'd be closing the grade school and it says the grade school number of times. We also recognize this, that there are so many people in our community that have, if our grade school closed, their middle school or high school student has to stay because they provide the, the, the coverage for the parents. So I think that's, and I share that because that wasn't really put as an option, but it's certainly something the, the school committee could consider is only closing one school and leaving the others open. I don't know, there's a lot of ramifications to that. But the point is, it's not, it's not a small number. It is, it's increasing. It's not getting less, it's increasing. We're not getting ahead. We're not, we're not even close to flattening the curve, so to speak, which is the term that we use, you know, everywhere. So yeah, those are just in the first.
Okay, I have something that I'm going to read for Jana, because she couldn't be here. I feel that the school committee and the superintendent have been pretty clear that our goal is to keep kids in school. Bottom line, we cannot do this without staff. We can get creative and believe me, administration and staff have been very creative. Teachers out, having their teaching partners photocopy, explain to subs their plans, giving up their own time to plan their 20-minute lunches, bathroom breaks, if they can squeeze them in, et cetera. Teachers have had a few kids join their classrooms as teachers have been out as well. This is by no means ideal, but they have been doing this since day one and they are reaching or have reached their limits. They have all had to do this on a moment's notice. They have been attacked, berated, and ignored. Work not picked up by parents whose children are quarantined or done by kids at home. There is no place teachers want to be more than at school with their students in front of them, ready to learn. But with all the extra work that is then piled on them, they are at their breaking point. That's Jana's, what Jana wanted to say.
Can I just add something to there and something we talked about here? A couple of times, only once up to this point have we, we closed for one day on Wednesday about a month or so ago. And that decision was made after a pretty lengthy conversation with, primarily with Jolene regarding her struggles with staffing to the grade school. And one of the things that we heard long and clear from the public last year was it's really hard for you to call me on a Sunday or tell me on a Monday night that we're not at school the next day. So that decision was, I said to Jolene, I need you to do the best you can to get through Monday and Tuesday, whatever you need to do. And lots, lots of people, including myself and other administrators pitched in to cover classes and do whatever duties to make that work so that we could give the public a couple of days' notice. Part of the reason we're having this meeting tonight is we want to plan in advance is whatever the decision of the school committee is, the decision to change November, Thanksgiving week, for instance, is to give the public as much notice as possible with respect to the situation we're dealing with and not say, we're going to call you tonight and tell you that tomorrow we're not at the school. That's, I think that's unfathomable. I think it's unfair. We've done everything we can to not have that type of situation. So I, I get everything. I get people's frustration if we're just doing the best we can.
So I got some emails from folks and they couldn't be here because of the time. So I promised them I would outline what their concerns were for them. So I'm just going to read some of those out. And if any of you feel the same, just know that we are acknowledging it and reading it. And so don't feel like you have to say it as well, that, that your community members are speaking for you as well. Though some, Kelly already outlined, families are experiencing high levels of stress, keeping their jobs, the financial burden of extra daycare and even finding daycare. Parents are concerned about the effects that will be on the kids if they're out of school. They need structure, predictability, routine. Some are very concerned that remote learning would actually create more spread because kids would be exposed to the community more instead of being in our schools. Some parents were asking, where is the reward of all the vaccinating, masking, distancing, and pool testing? What is this all for?
Can I answer that before you want?
I'd like to just run down these. How would this affect healthcare workers, staff who are working in healthcare that is already overtaxed? If they need to be home with their small children, what is that going to do to our healthcare system? One parent asked, how does changing November 22nd and 23rd to no school days affect the spread? And also remote after Thanksgiving? Their feeling was COVID is everywhere. It doesn't matter where you pick it up. It's here too. It's not, it's not just out in the other states. Some possible solutions were substitute teachers. What about recent high school graduates? Could they come in over break? And I do know one high school student has actually signed up to do that. Parent volunteers, is this being organized to maximize that opportunity or are we, are we taking up the parents on their offers to help? One parent asked if we could hire more staff. That one, I think it's difficult because we've tried that and we can't find anybody.
Yeah, people should know, we've had vacancies since the beginning of the year.
So these are some of the concerns that, that I promised those parents that I would, I would read for them. I also got a letter from a teacher, and I would like to read that as well, so you can hear the other side.
Can I address it while you're looking for that?
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
I am a new hire at the middle school. I teach seventh grade science, seventh and eighth grade math, and algebra one. Given my role at the school and the topic of discussion for tonight's meeting, I felt it important to share my experience this year and opinion on the situation to you all. I began the school year a few days late and with little notice. With very few written resources or supports for my curriculum, it did not take long for me to realize the daunting task in front of me. Were this a regular school year, pre-COVID, I have no doubt that I would already be overwhelmed, given the number of classes I have to plan for. I believe that the work I am asked to do every day should not be the work of an individual and would be unreasonable to ask someone even during the regular year. Unfortunately, the prep and planning work I have to do for my classes is only the tip of the iceberg. As I'm sure you're all aware, the middle school has had a significant number of students who have had to quarantine since the start of the year. I do not believe I've had an entire week where not one of my students was in quarantine since the middle of September. Every time, sorry, every time there is a student quarantine in one of my classes, my work nearly doubles. I have to give instruction in class and convey this information to kids at home. While I do my best to have those kids at home join a Google Meet for synchronous learning, for a lot of them, it's too much. Because of this, I am left to try to find videos or extra practice for these students so that they do not fall behind. It may, it may not sound like a lot, but this takes a significant amount of time. I recognize that the challenges of living through a pandemic are felt by my students as well. I do everything I can to come to school with a smile on my face every day. I hate to admit that this gets harder as the days go by. I do not feel supported. I do not feel like my time is valued. I haven't, I haven't kept track, but I would estimate my work takes 60 hours every week. I'm exhausted, frustrated, and sad. Exhausted because I have a lot of work to do and very little time to myself. Frustrated because I do not feel that myself and my colleagues are being heard when we voice these issues. And sad because there are days, more often than I would like to admit, where I wonder if I can continue in this position. I'm also concerned by the COVID-related situation in the community. While I am fortunate enough to be young, healthy, and vaccinated, not every person in my life is. I feel uneasy when I have to show up to work, when it's I feel uneasy when I have to show up to work when it seems as though there is a higher risk for myself and in turn those in my life. While it seems parents have the option to keep their children at home, if they're uncomfortable with sending them due to COVID, I do not feel as though I have that option. If I were to take a day or any leave of absence, that extra responsibility would probably be placed on my colleagues due to the lack of staffing. You should be aware that this stress is felt to an extreme degree by most, if not all my colleagues. I should note that they have all been incredibly supportive, especially given their personal workloads. I get to work with some of the, some really amazing people every day. But no amount of amazing can change the fact that a number of these people are nearing their breaking point. I was not speaking only for myself when I said that I often consider if I can remain in this position. For the lack of a better term, something has got to give. If not, I fear you'll be dealing with a serious staffing issue at Winthrop Middle School. I would ask that you strongly consider all the options listed on the letter sent by Mr. Hodgkin today. Incorporating these proposed changes would be a fantastic start toward providing teachers with the support we need in our classrooms and for our health. So that's, I'm, I'm with Tim. This is a very hard situation because I don't see where, I see everybody losing. Um, to me, I, I don't know what to do as long as the quarantining has to remain because to me, more than anything, it's the quarantining that is causing all the problems. So I think the kids club, being, uh, a school-related, activity is a good start. I, I don't know what else to do. I, I, can we be creative with that? When I, I, I thought about nothing else for days now, and it just seems to me that it's the quarantining that causes the stress for the families and for the teachers. I don't see anything changing until something in that area changes. I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think that's where the real issue is.
I think the hard thing for people to get, and why they don't, people don't understand why this is so challenging is exactly what you said. It is the students who are quarantined. And I said at the beginning of the year when we were as administrative team trying to, to, uh, figure out what, what best to do, what to strategize for what happens when the, when the Delta variant hits, what the effects are going to be. And there really is no way to, to have a plan because we didn't know a, how, how many, uh, or how widespread. We knew that if it was as simple as everybody goes remote, um, we've, we've, we've done that. We did it last year. And, um, so if, if I'm a teacher and all of my kids, kiddos are home, um, I can do that. That's pretty simple. That's one, one less, one plan. Um, it's when you have, with the reality of what we've been dealing with, we have, you know, three, four, five kids that are out of your classroom that you have to deal with the ones in front of you and then deal with the ones that are not in front of you. Um, that's the greatest challenge. That's what's been the most burdensome for, for, uh, for the teachers to be dealing with. That's what is causing the stress. I don't think we're done at, at board level first. Yep.
Does anybody have anything else to jump?
No, I, I know. I, it's not that I was, I just wanted to let the people know, the other ladies have left because tonight is National Honor Society induction. So we have one inductee here and an inductor there. Okay, so that's why they've left this time.
Which is why we're meeting at 4:30 because we had that, uh, setup.
Right. We had, we all wanted to be able to attend that scene. That's one of the two positive things going on in this time. Um, anybody else at the board level?
Scott, did you want to jump in?
Oh, well, hello. I'm Catherine Everett. So new. I'm, I'm feeling, um, I definitely want to listen and, and learn. I don't know, sort of, we're called for what, uh, what I add to it. I am a special teacher in another school, so I have that perspective. It, it's a challenge. Um, I don't know what options people are exploring to what conversations with the public. It sounds like childcare is an issue. So is there something school can do to address that? Advance warning, I think it's just so critical. And, you know, whatever it should do with quarantine, I think those are sort of, if you could sort of, be, you know, thinking outside the box about, you know, with that complement that parents have to deal with, which is childcare. So can we be proactive rather than just say, you'll have to work it out? Like, what are the things that you should do in the past to do?
As far as childcare, I, I don't know.
Yeah, that would be, that would really, that would be ideal, except that it would be the worst scenario in terms of us potentially mixing our cohorts and bringing them together. So, it would be a huge challenge. So.
I had, I had a couple of other things to, I, I'm probably going to be hounding you all about the whole quarantine thing. Because it's, to me, that's at the crux of all this. How will the five to 11-year-olds being vaccinated affect quarantining in the future?
Well, it will add to, um, uh, the, as it currently stands, if they're vaccinated and they're close contacts, uh, in particular if they're in pool testing, then they don't have to. And that's why I didn't answer, but I interrupted before I didn't need to. But the, everything we've done has worked. Um, I think what people, we did not anticipate was how overwhelming the, uh, the Delta variant was and how, uh, how it just hasn't been totally effective in terms of slowing everything down. But I can even begin to imagine, uh, the extent of spread that we would have had, we do not, if we did not have all those things in place. The, you know, and I, I mentioned it before, the classrooms that were, um, quarantined, all classrooms that were quarantined, not the entire class had been quarantined because some of those kids were in pool testing. Um, conversely, and, and, and very frustrating for, for a number of people who've been in touch with us a lot, are, there have been still some community spread situations such as the Kids Club, um, and other things where, uh, that's not covered in pool testing. And that's not our decision. That is a CDC guideline. So I say that and I'll come back to that in a second. At some point, this school committee needs to come to grips with this. And I hear people saying, people have talked to me, well, I work in another district and we're not doing this or we're not doing that. And the CDC has simply said this. And I think you have to think long and hard before you decide not to do this. If we, we chose to follow the CDC guidelines, we follow the CDC guidelines or we don't. Uh, the other places that haven't done it, and, and what do you think about adding stress to the teachers? If you choose to, as a committee, not to follow the CDC guidelines, I can guarantee you that we'll lose a lot of staff pretty quickly. It's hard as it has been. The, we, we believe that we're, we need something to get ahead of this. And I could talk more about that, uh, in a minute, but, uh, with, if, as long as we're following the CDC guidelines, we have to. I don't necessarily always understand, nor do I even necessarily agree. For instance, um, I'm going to disagree, um, with this Kids Club thing. I, I, I was very much on board, uh, based upon preliminary conversations that they follow our, our guidelines. They do this. Um, we had nine, nine kids that are, that are tested positive as a result of that they're involved with the Kids Club. And it covers five grade levels, six grade levels. Remember, you gave me that permission the other day, but whatever. It's, uh, it's, it's a lot of, you know, and they're all grade school kids. Um, and that's a perfect example of a community spread. Um, the CDC says that it's, that it's, uh, that they don't have time to vet every single situation. And I got a call, uh, I mean, I got an email last night and a call again this morning from the CDC outbreak team to reiterate their position because they saw that I put this on different consideration. Uh, they thought that, that I was advocating for, for that position. And I might have that, but my job is to continue to look. Um, and they were very clear. They do not, uh, consider, they still consider that a business or an outside organization and community spread. And so, um, when Lonnie put together the guidelines for, uh, youth basketball, he was very clear to put in there that this is a community activity. And if you are, if you are close contact, you will be required to, uh, quarantine regardless of whether you're pool testing or not. I understand that causes some confusion. It's me, and I live it every day. So I can appreciate that it does for other people as well.
Kelly, I, I have a hard time accepting that as an argument. And, and here's why.
On my argument, first of all.
When, well, yeah, if you're saying that you don't agree with it, it kind of is your argument against not doing it. So.
You should, you have to say it first.
Okay. So basketball, for example, is not in a vacuum. It is not solely a Winthrop School District activity. It involves other school districts and other people.
Sure.
The Kids Club is held in the same building that the students attend school. It is not impacting, it is not involving any one student outside of the school district, including the student staff who are students of our school district. All of these students have the opportunity to be in pool testing. Anybody over the age of 12 right now has the opportunity to be vaccinated. And soon if they haven't already, between the ages of five and 12, have the opportunity to be vaccinated. Whether they or their families choose to do that or not is a completely different, it's not, it's not a discussion here, right? But if the only difference is the location, right, my classroom or the gym.
That's why I'm mixing cohorts too.
Okay. Is there no way to deal with that in the gymnasium?
Well, so let me talk out of both sides of my mouth for a second, recognizing it. Yeah, um, because I, I'm, one of the things that I need to do is take in all this information. Sometimes I, you know, I, I'm, so necessarily, isn't necessarily what I say, what I believe. In this case, I'll be clear about that. Um, the, I was convinced when I talked to the person said, uh, Friday night, whatever it was from this outbreak, uh, team, I made that argument exactly like you just did. And it made sense to me that we should, if there are students and they're in our building and they're following our guidelines, why can't we, why can't we treat them differently than, say, Girl Scouts or daycare, you know, in the community and those types of things, which we really don't have any control over? And they said it's because of, uh, mixing the, mixing the cohorts. And then they furthered, I said, well, what would, what if, what would happen if they were our program? And I wasn't even really thinking about what I was asking. Honest to God, I was thinking about what Sue Bell's would ask. So, um, so then the person said to me, and this is what was really confusing and, and, um, hard for me to deal with. They said it would be no different, and you said this already, than our basketball teams. Our basketball teams are mixed cohorts and mixed grade levels and they're, it's the same thing. All of our kids, blah, 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 all this type of stuff. And that's when they said they don't have time to do, to, to vet all situations. When I talked to Sue about this, that, you know, there was, I don't want to speak for you and so we can do that, but there was sort of a sense of, well, that's their guidelines. They're not demanding that we do that. So I agree that if we made that decision. But they said, and then Emily Boland, who's the, like, the, the top everything in the state when it comes to this type of stuff. Um, she's the one who emailed me last night and said she wanted to be crystal clear that the, uh, the, the Kids Club and organizations like that have been treated as, uh, outside organizations and fall under the community spread. And, and that was really kind of that. Um, I will say, and I want to say that, I want to be really careful to say this because honestly, working with the outbreak team has been awesome. They've been really good. They've been really accessible. Um, but it's, it's, it's still somewhat frustrating. And, um, they were a film with that, with that. But so I, so it doesn't mean that every, everything they say makes a lot of sense, but they, we're looking at things on our level. They look at things on the entire, on the entire state level and then work with the federal CDC to look at things on the national level. So, uh, they, they just said they weren't able to sort of vet it. And, but they did say, you, you do have to make up your mind as a community, either follow the CDC guidelines or don't follow them.
I have, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make to it. Number one, um, it's really hard for me to think about our families suffering because they don't have time to vet us. That, that's difficult for me because they don't have time to vet us, but yet our families have to deal with being classified as community spread. And that, that's hard for me. Um, number two, as far as following the guidelines and all of that, we did say that we will revisit that on a regular basis. So in my mind, that doesn't mean that those are set in stone and we never question them. That's my, I don't know how you guys get around that.
I, but I'm just, I can't say this enough. I, I'm, I think part of it's difficult to this for the, for the parents and for the, the teachers. I think one shred of hope for the teachers or comfort for the teachers is that we are following the advice of the people who know this better than we do. And that's the CDC. So if we, if we make the collective decision as a school committee that we're not following the CDC guidelines because we don't like them, um, or they're too hard for us to follow, then I think we're setting ourselves up for, uh, for major disaster.
All right. Well, okay, I hear what you're saying, but I guess I, maybe we need to know from the teachers then what, I guess, we do have to make a decision as a community. So you can't have it both ways either. They, you're either going to be doing this and having all the quarantining and all the stress. Or, or you can't just, I don't know. I, I feel bad for the parents. I, I feel like it kind of is all getting weighed on them that if something's got to give, it's going to have to come from them with keeping the kids out of school.
So can I just, Tim, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you, in last spring, you had three different situations where your children had to quarantine almost back to back to back.
My son lost a month. It's fine. It's just a close contact.
That was close contact from an outside spread, which doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, it's just steps, somebody stepped on a field outside, tested positive, and then he was on the bus.
So I think there's a level of this feels really unreasonable, not fair to some people, but I guess from, from my perspective, it's, it's still better than it was.
Better than it was, yes.
Kelly, I feel like there's a difference between the CDC guidelines specifically saying Kids Club is an outside organization. And the CDC say, we don't have enough time to determine that.
Uh, maybe I'm not saying it. They're not doing, it's not Kids Club. They're not, they, they said, um, Emily Boland said, I wish, I started to call and find that earlier. They're not vetting any outside organization unless they are a school, black and white school. And that's what I tried to say. It was actually what my recommendation was going to be. Um, Lonnie and Jeff are both here. They could probably give you some of the history, but at, at one point, um, Kids Club or the, that was part of the school, was, and I don't know where the, the, uh, the separation happened. Um, but there are a lot of, and I use this as an example, the place where I was a former superintendent, we had a before and after school program, very similar to the Kids Club, that was, um, uh, done with a 21st century grant. Um, that is identified as a, you know, this is where I have some issues. That's why I set up clearly, just giving information. And it'd be sound like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. I'm just providing information. That, that program still exists. Um, it's still considered a school program. And if, if they had full testing in that district, those kids would be able to be considered as part of pool testing. It's not that they're not vetting us, not vetting any.
Well, again, we paid a price for that. I, I don't know. I, it's, that's a difficult one. Melissa?
I'm, I'm ready to, yeah, I've, I've been, are we, are we ready to?
Can I just, can I? And then I'm going to.
Um, so I can talk from, have a last year or this year. I know it's very different and everyone is feeling distressed. And I personally have had it this year with my only children. So I, I feel as a parent as well. But I have to say transmission did not happen last year. It did not happen. We did not see, so if you wanted to change quarantine guidelines last year, I've been like, sure, I haven't seen any transmission, questionable of us once. But other than that, I can tell you a hundred percent we did not have any positives. This year, we have had, in three different classrooms at the grade schools, we've had transmission. And not just one child, multiple. So when you tell me, when you say we want them to come back to school, you are going to put us, teachers and staff more at risk. And I can tell you, because I've seen it firsthand. And, and so I, I understand the hesitation and everyone wants to be in school, and I do too. My son, my daughter had COVID, and I know it said this, well, they have not heard this, but my, my daughter had COVID from a daycare exposure, school daycare, exposure, day 14, she tested positive. She could have gone to preschool in our. She could have gone to preschool in our building between the 11 and 14 day. I kept her out just because I felt like that was the safest path, so grandpa watched her. And I had that option, day 14, after multiple tests, she tested positive. So, and my son stayed home the full 20 plus days and tested multiple times because I did not want to risk him to come to school and pass it to his teacher that has a one-year-old. So that's, I know that, that's me, and so I just want to be clear, like, it happens. And my goddaughter, whose COVID continues to have issues. So, you know, it's, it's real. And we have had 40 cases, and I can tell you, I've tested multiple of them, and they tested positive because I've tested them outside, drive-by, testing every day, after when I'm out there, come to me. So I just wanted that, if we don't follow CDC guidelines, we, what are we gonna follow? And I at least have the CDC backup, I know people hate it and then dislike it. But I at least have that, like, hey, this is the CDC 10-day quarantine. If we don't do that, it's going to be very more gray and make me a little bit more like, you know, what do we follow? So that's on transmission. Kids Club, I get that. And Lonnie and I have had these conversations multiple times about Kids Club, and yes, we are seeing a spread at Kids Club. Why? Because we're dealing with death, I'm sure. It's transmission, it's everywhere. But if we do move it from community to school, we know, we are masking, we're distancing, we're, we have assigned seating. And Lonnie talked on behalf of having less staff soon, I can't remember that, that language, that there was adults that needed to leave, or there were some covered. So if you're going to follow school guidelines, we need to be really strict about that, and cohorts or assign of some sort. Because what we follow here at school is, we're sitting in the second grade cafeteria right now, right? And they're six feet apart, and they all have assigned seating. And when we have a positive, say she's positive, we are only quarantining person in front, person behind, person side, side, depending on the, you know, so we're, we have a sign. And the staff that are doing the cafeteria duty is checking to make sure they're absent or not, or if they switch seats. You know, and so we are very, Jolene and I look at spreadsheets on a daily basis right now, and putting only those few people in quarantine. And then we look at, hey, are they pool testing? Yep, so I notify them, saying, hey, your child is a close contact, but they don't have to, they can keep them into school. Please be mindful of symptoms, they will do their weekly test. We just did our pool test today, we will deliver results soon. But, and we, and I have to say, we are, pool testers, numbers are increasing, we're close to 200 at the grade school. So yay on that.
But the pool testing doesn't count for anything if the exposure is outside.
And we don't make those rules. That is a, that is definitely a main CDC, main O E guideline, and it's community-based. And Jim said it very clearly, that he follows strict guidelines here. We're all been doing this for the last few years, right? Year, two years, I don't know, 21 months. And they haven't really lightened that much, but guidelines have changed. And I have hope that with more, you know, time, with this very completely going away, and with more vaccines, we are having a plan for Friday. So I just, I want to be clear with Kids Club though, if we are going to follow, if they are going to be school-based, I really strongly feel that they need to be following our guidelines very strictly. Plus the staff that are there, whether they're vaccinated or not. They can't test out of quarantine. Or if they, or, I mean, if they're vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine, but highly encouraged to test because we don't have, our children are under-stated. So I, I want people to be aware that, you know, I'm, I'm pro-changing it if that's what you guys decide. But I also want it to be, and I'm happy to sit down with Lonnie and Jeff and whoever, and have that conversation. But staffing is potentially could be issuing up to 50 kids, right? 50 children, 40?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine children that can come.
Max.
Max total of 30.
But you're licensed for 49.
Yeah, so you know, that's a lot, a lot of kiddos.
This gentleman needs.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna count. Yep, but he's been waiting for.
I understand.
Yes, please.
Travis Armstrong, parent of three Winter students, two in the grade school, one in the high school. My wife is also a teacher at Winter, so thank you for the opportunity to talk to him. There we have, I'd like to start by saying very thankful for all the work that the staff has done. I hear the difficulty, I see the difficulty at home in my life. In order to educate the children of Winter during a very difficult time, I'm also thankful for the leadership of you all. An incredibly stressful season to be a leader. I would like to speak on behalf of many parents and students who strongly feel that kids need to continue to be allowed to have in-person learning throughout the school year. My children, as well as many other children, have had to deal with tremendous anxiety with the possibility and the reality of being sent home each day they go to school. My family has been fortunate that they have not contracted the COVID-19 virus this school year. Although that is true, my children have yet to have one full week of school this year yet. My kids have been sent home because they have had fall allergies, and they were forced to quarantine for 19 straight days. Yet they are made healthy and COVID-free. They were again sent home because they were close contacts, fully vaccinated individuals at school who were COVID-positive. Yet again, my quarantine children remain healthy and COVID-free. It seems to many individuals, parents, teachers, staff, and community members that I have had conversations with, that the goal and intention of superintendent and some in leadership is to close the schools. It seems that way regardless of the wishes of parents, students, staff, the O E, or even the CDC. On behalf of many working parents, frustrated staff, who are the ones who need to deal with the consequences of the constant statements from the superintendent's office. Most significantly, the struggling children who are not afraid of the virus, rather the mandates that they've had to deal with for the better part of a year and a half. Please allow our kids to stay in school, and as the teachers are trying to do, let's make this more about education again. Many of the students in the school are significantly behind because of learning remotely. This last year, they lose another year of learning because of quarantines and extended closures. They almost definitely will not be college-ready. And conversations with teachers, including several friends who teach in Winter schools, have revealed that teaching remotely is much less effective. And conversations with students, including my kids, have revealed that remote learning is producing anxiety, producing, again, not effective. And conversations with parents have revealed that remote learning has put undue stress on their families and has not been effective. Superintendent Hodgkins, as a community member, I hear two messages in your communications. The first is the supportive recognition of the faculty and staff of Winter public schools, I appreciate that. The second is a loud and continual suggestion that schools should close. Ultimately, it is under control of you and the leaders here tonight to make those decisions. It seems as though past efforts to close schools did not stop the spread of disease. The nation's efforts to social distance, shut down non-essential businesses, vaccine, quarantine have done little to change the situation that we all face. We are a community with a great school system. We are not epidemiologists, but focused on what our school can do rather than on what has been proven to be ineffective. Our schools are great at providing positive social atmospheres where children learn core values and are free to grow academically. We are fighting a losing battle using protocols to combat a virus. We can, however, win at educating our children if we keep them connected to their learning. Let's do what we are good at and teach our kids. Let me close with this, if we are truly seeking the good health of our students, remember that their mental health is equally, if not more, important. As every other organization, business, group in our community remains open, please don't close the schools. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, please keep our kids in school.
Thank you. Yes. I don't know how you want to take public comment from the audience, we have all the largest people on Zoom. And we still make first and last names for people that aren't playing for us.
Need to just remind them, if they don't put their first and last names, they will not be permitted to participate.
So do you want me to just raise my hand for each person that I have on the list? Sure, okay. Yeah, I might, what I might do is go back and forth between in-person and Zoom, how's that sound? To keep it so it's. Okay. So the first person that's left to see is Edward Booker. Okay. So then Edward Booker. It'll be, no, after the Zoom, you'll be next, okay?
Okay. Is that me, Edward Booker?
Yes, hello.
Hello, thank you for your time. I guess the problem that I'm having with this whole scenario is that we're, we're doing essentially everything recommended. We're doing pool testing, masking, vaccinating for those who can be vaccinated, no unvaccinated members in the school. Essentially, every step out there right now, yet cases are still going up. So my question is, what is the end game at this point? I mean, like someone mentioned earlier, everyone that wants to be vaccinated can be vaccinated at this point. I think even, you know, it's known at this point that there's breakthrough cases. So even at 100% vaccination, we're still gonna experience spread both within the community and the school. So is our goal here to eliminate people contracting the virus? Or is it to limit ill effect from the virus? I know when this whole started, it was, we were tracking the deaths, we're tracking the severe hospitalizations. Seems like those numbers have completely faded to the background and we're completely concentrated on number of cases, which really, in my opinion, doesn't make any difference to anything. As long as the ill effects are not there, as long as we're not experiencing deaths, severe, you know, side effects there. I don't understand the end goal of what's going on with everything right now at this point, and I guess that's my concern.
There's no, I, I think, I don't know if people expect that this, you know, this or that, there's, there's no, I mean, those are all valid points. We don't know, but I could tell you that when we, the superintendent's met with Dr. Shaw about three months ago, he's asked very similar questions. And basically, what he's saying is what I've said multiple times, that we are still in a bubble about, we still are recording deaths, we are still, we're over 5 million deaths worldwide, we're over 750,000 deaths here in the United States. We're not at a point where we say, well, we're just gonna live with, you know, people want to say, and if you want to think about the real end game, the real end game is this reality. COVID is never going away. We are always going to have people like the flu. We have thousands of people that die every single year for the flu, and eventually, that will be the end game for COVID. I don't think we're remotely close to that at this point. We are still, we are still losing, like I said, 750,000 over, I don't know what the number was, some million number, or I don't know how many millions of people here in our country who have had or still get COVID. So I think the question, direct question that was asked to Dr. Shaw was, kind of, when will, the same question, when will this go away? When will we stop trying to, you know, put all these things in place? And he said, it's so far away that the metrics for deciding when to do that haven't even been decided yet. We're still fighting the battle, we're still losing the battle. It, it may feel like it's slowing down, but we're not seeing that it's slowing down. We feel like we're doing everything we possibly can, and it's not slowing down. So let me get to the point about why the recommendations, why the CDC is suggesting that we look at a closure. We know that, that generally speaking, the closures will not be effective if kids are not in school and they basically are allowed to mingle amongst themselves. That's, at, at, at the very least, we, well, the reason that the recommendation for doing it after Thanksgiving is there is we know, we anticipate that families will be mingling, intermingling with other cohorts and stuff. And so we would anticipate that there would be a spike in COVID coming back from, from break because of that mixing. We're hoping that by, by giving a lot of notice, that we can encourage people to, to minimize the exposure outside of the community and give the school at least a 10-day break, which we're already almost doing with the, with the Thanksgiving break, except that people will come back. And that we, we essentially restart the whole process. And if you think about it this way, I said it before, keeping track of the, of the spread in July and August, there was never a week that there was more than seven or eight people that were testing positive in the entire community, not school kids, obviously. Once we get back to school, it's been in double digits ever since, and it peaked two weeks ago with 22. 16 this week. So it's, I think there's, what the CDC is saying and you're considering is, is there a way that we say to people, you need to keep, do the best you can, keep people away from each other? And, and try to slow down the spread that way? And then we, we sort of reset the clock, we set the game and, and come back after, after Thanksgiving with 100% of our students and 100% of our staff and see what happens then. Now, a, a number of you can make the argument, I can make the argument that when we, because we know agreed, that they're in school and it's still spreading. So what we know to be true hasn't been affected, and I think that leads.
So could I, could I respeak to that? Because I, you know, you did mention some of the country's numbers, but when I look online and when I do some research, I find that based on our county, we're at a total death count of around 109 over the two-year period. And then speaking to children, at least where my kids are involved in the five and underage range, I mean, there's been a total of 48 hospitalizations with one death over the entire two-year period. I mean, when you look at those numbers, the reactions that we're having, and realistically, the whole reason for this meeting was over, you know, teacher mental health as well as student mental health. I think if you talk to any of the teachers and students, the mental health issue isn't necessarily COVID. It's, it's all of the precautions we're taking around COVID, which are stressing them out, reducing the number of staff available. I couldn't tell you how many times my, you know, my family or members of, that I know of the community have had to quarantine with a negative effect, with a negative result, and they're still not able to go do their job, which is only adding to the fact that we don't have staff necessary. And then on top of that, the school district is doing things like putting in place vaccine mandates for volunteers. So when you're already in a space where you're short-staffed, and then you take the pool of collective volunteers available and chop that down because they have to then be mandated, I don't understand how any of this is helping the situation we're in as opposed to making everybody's mental health worse and seeing, like you've mentioned several times, increase of spread. It's not going down, it's going up with all the precautions taken. So I, I mean, at this point, who's to say it's any better than if we just?
You just throw that on my floor.
You know, we don't have a, we don't have a cohort to compare to where we just said, that's it, run free, no mask, no nothing, see what happens. We've never done that, we don't know the result of that, but this clearly is not working.
Thank you very much.
Could you speak up, I can't hear you. You don't need to take your mask off, just speak louder.
You can.
I'll do my best. Thank you. Well, my name is Patrick Parker, and I'm the parent of the student that are in school and the high school here. And before I start to even say it works, but I understand that teachers and staff are overworked and it's really hard to deal with quarantined kids and in-school kids. And they're always gonna be quarantined because there's gonna be T P papers. In that instance, why aren't we going for remote at least until the next year? The second half of the school year, to give a chance for kids to catch up and vaccinate, at least if conscious they can. We did it for half of the year in 2019, why would we not do it again now? And that's something, I, to me, that would just like, it would alleviate a lot of stress. There's no more, are we at school, are we not at school? No, you just always don't have school, you're always at home. Teachers wouldn't be like trying to vote because they're only getting to do it one. And I understand that concern for community spread, but to me, that responsibility is not with parents. It's not the responsibility of the school to make sure that students that aren't in school don't go forward with their neighbors. That's a parent's responsibility. As a matter of fact, I think it's even safer because then parents can choose, okay, I think my neighbor stays because they're vaccinated, their kids are vaccinated, and they don't want to help with that endangerment to their neighbors. Parents can then choose who their children are with instead of going. Parents can then choose who their children are with instead of going to an entire classroom full of everybody in the community. And you don't have a choice, your children are exposed to it at that point. It just, I, I'm scared of that. They're like, apparently I would take this from a middle school. And then wondering like, if my daughter is literally three days away from being vaccinated, it's been catch one of those 100 cases, one in 49 cases where the child has. Any number of child death or hospitalization is too much. And if it takes kids being home and parents taking the possibility to choose who they're with, that's what should happen. And to me, it's just, it's like, why, why is this not even on the table? To just go remote at least up until the second half of the school year? And then again, the responsibility is on parents to choose who their kids are with if they can spread, sports or no sports, whatever. And teachers aren't trying to double team, quarantine kids, non-quarantine kids. Some are not quarantined, some are putting back in quarantine, maybe that would also not be happening.
I don't know how to respond to that. I think we, we learned. I, I think somebody has said, and the research does support that the, the best place for our kids to be is in school. The, the reason for the considerations tonight, despite what was said earlier, I'm not advocating for, I don't want our kids home, I want our kids in school. No matter, actually, we have remote classrooms. And, and the, and I don't want to put Megan on the spot, but we can, it, it is virtually impossible to say, no, not impossible. It is virtually hard to believe that, that a remote education versus an in-person education is equitable. I hear what you're saying. Certainly, I was in a different school system from April till they closed in March to the end of the year, and people went remote. And quite frankly, it wasn't very good, but I don't blame anybody then because it was like, nobody ever taught me how to teach remotely. So people did the best job they could. We had a lot of timelines here to get ready for it. And we, and, and then we didn't really need it at the grade school, the middle school, because of the way we did things last year. This year, the big push is on getting people back in person because we believe that the best way, we made the investment as administrative team in additional support to get kids who were, who were, because of the inconsistencies with education last year, try to get them caught up. To be honest with you, I wasn't as concerned about what the work looked like going home the first month or two, because generally, the first month or so in school is, is a lot of review and redundancy. And, but now we're getting into the 12th week of the school year. I am concerned about what instructions the kids are missing, and I just don't think they can get it through remote. So what I'm, what I'm posing here, and, and I want to say this again, I'm the messenger. If you want to shoot the messenger, shoot me. I don't care. But it's, so I'm not advocating a particular position. I'm saying that the CDC is saying what we've been doing, which is everything, and they've given accolades to the school for the work we've done, is not working. So they're suggesting we should try something different. Their whole rationale really fits into what you're suggesting, which is, let's give them a good two-week break. Let's encourage them to stay away from each other. We know we have Thanksgiving in the middle of that, so let's take, let's take some time around that, either before or after. I think more, it makes more sense to do it after, if you're looking for my, my two cents worth. And that one, then we reset everything. Everybody comes back on whatever day we come back, and 100% of the students come back. Nobody is in COVID, in quarantine at that point. No staff are, nobody is, unless they have to test positive, which God knows that can happen. But basically, we come back with everybody and then we try to go forward.
Well, if your concern is the level of the quality of the education that children are getting remotely, why don't we focus our concern about upping the quality of that education rather than upping the COVID protection? Because again, I'm all for COVID protection. I don't want to interrupt them because they don't work. I just like, what else can you do? Besides, you know, besides, you're at home. But the more I do my homework, the more they're missing out, the more they're trying to play hookups with their work. The more they're missing on, believe me, if I could go home, I would. But my kids want to be part of their community. They want to see friends, whether it's online or video chat, if that's all they can do, then that's all they can do. But it's much more important for me to have the safety in my, trying to not let our kids get COVID or get vaccinated, or if they want to catch COVID when the high school aren't literally overrun right now. I'm trying to people away to other states.
Yep.
I understand how to stop it, but if the spread is slowing, if all they're doing, we need to like really, really set it up. Like, go remote, like, please, just go remote for the sake of the kids who are actually dying, I accuse. Please go remote.
So what I'm, the only, last thing I would say with respect to that, I think, and this was a big conversation around this table, where there's a lot of concern, and when we planned as administrative team, a lot of concern about the social, emotional. And you talked about your kids wanting to be in school.
Yeah.
And a big part of school.
My responsibility is in order to address our social and mental needs.
Sure.
It has the school's responsibility to address the mental needs of my children. Unless the mental stress is in school. And if quarantine and that before is causing the mental stress, stop it and let us go remote. And then we can get back to some kind of normal at home. So if we can deal with the absence of our kids, choose what they can have, which is like in a whole classroom. And if that's what it means privately, it's not the school. And you know what we call, every school, snowberry, ivory, I've gotten from the schools since the kids started school, like 50 years ago. Make sure, say, that school is not a daycare and that school can close or will be closed at any notice. So parents need to have active plans. That's always been the case. Why is this the case now? Why are we saying like, oh, a lot of our families in hardship? Sorry, I was running free job before COVID started. We're down to a single lane of household. The why is that I want to be able to be home for my kids when I have to be? It sucks. I'm sure everyone thinks it sucks, but if that's what it takes to keep the kids safe, then would you please do that?
Thank you. Yes.
Before we move on, can we remind clips on Zoom that the chat is not a free-for-all or just any kind of comment? If, if they have a public comment that they'd like to share, that's what they.
So you can, you can shut the chat off and just ask the raise their hand if they want to speak.
Victoria Clary is the next person.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Victoria Clary. I have three kids in the district. I have two in the grade school and one in the high school. My family actually just moved here over the summer, and we moved here for the schools. And so far, we have been nothing but impressed with the dedication and diligence of the staff of these schools. We've heard a lot about how the staff has been all hands on deck, and it's time for the community to back them up and be all hands on deck as well, whether that is vaccinations, masking. But I guess the most important, easiest thing we can do to help the teachers and the students is participate in pooled testing. My, my daughter Phaedra here was identified as a close contact at school very recently. She participates in pooled testing and she was one of four, four kids in her class. The whole entirety of her class was not there, but she was. She could have a social, emotional contact. She could have the experience of school just by simply swabbing her nose. Does it hurt, Phaedra?
No.
Is it hard?
No.
Is it scary?
No.
It's easy. It's a really easy thing we can do to keep our schools open. Everyone wants our kids in schools, and it's just a very simple thing that we can all help out with. And I guess that's all we have to say.
Thank you. I, I want to echo that. To me, the, the hard part is the pool testing has nothing to do with its community spread. It, it has no value whatsoever. It's the contact, close contact is a community spread. Correct, Melissa? That's correct.
Higher ups.
That, yeah, that, that's hard. Anyway. Somebody from in-person? Yes.
I, I'm correct. My biggest concern is with the school. What are we going to gain from shutting down for a major two-year? My kids just coming off being quarantined. Now we're going to shut them down. They've been shut down twice this year for quarantine. Had nothing to do with the school. Schools, uh, they are on the pool testing now, so we kind of, we don't fully understand it. And I almost put it, teach them in school, so that's the only reason they're there. It doesn't make any sense to us. I think we're supposed to say this because we get tested multiple weeks. But if it keeps them in school, that's a point there. But shutting this one down for an extended period of time, you're still going to have kids, we're going to have quarantine when they come back. You're not going to start the same schedule. We're going to, community spread is there. We're one of the most vaccinated states in the nation, and we're, we're on fire right now. So I don't, I don't know what the answer is. But we've got to talk more about that, that everybody's personal situation. What can we do to keep the kids?
Let me give you the real simple, and I'm not, this is not a, as I said in my memo, there's no silver bullets. So there's no guarantee from the CDC recommendation or from, from me sharing what they're saying. They're saying we've done everything except trying to do remote to reset. And they'd be the first to say, Jim Hodgson would be the first to say that, is it, I mean, do we have any control? We, we have less control over kids that are out in the community and who they interact with. I can't do much about that. But the hope is that, that if we had a more than 10-day window for spread, and I'm saying, I keep saying after, the week after Thanksgiving because of the, the additional travel and such, whatever. The hope would be that we reset and we start with, anybody, there'll be, there certainly would be no school spread during that time. So the only spread there would be would be community spread, and there'd be no close contact. So we would come back with a significantly higher population, and hopefully then the, all the protocols we have in place will work. And it's a fair question to say, what if they don't? Because I don't know.
Right. It's not, it's not going to help per se, you know, you opened with, you know, the, the three-legged stool. And it's, is it going to stress parents out even more for parents, my community? Wouldn't we just been out for 10 days and then we're coming back and go wait for quarantine again? So now, now they're out for 30 days almost, you know, and it will help the teacher. But that's, that's why we're here, to find a solution to help all three ways.
So that's a great point. I'm glad you said that because it's the, I think it does add stress to that leg of the stool. And, and we're talking about a week, not talking about two, well, we're talking about vaca, I mean, vacation. It's the, you know, Thanksgiving week. And then either week before or the week after is what the recommendation is. And I think that does certainly add stress to the one leg of that stool, and it adds support to, to the teacher's side of it. But hopefully, if, you know, everything worked well, then when we come back, when we're back to five days a week for the rest of the year, with the exception of what they might decide next week, then we're, we're sort of equally distributing the, I don't know, the, the stress because it's not moving away.
Ask a third question. I think, all right, we're talking about going remote. At no time are we talking about closing the school. I think it's, is that true?
That is true.
So I think it's really important, the language that we use, that we don't say we're closing the schools. That is not what I think is on the table at all. The education would be provided. It would be a different form of instruction, but it's not a question of closing the school. It's going remote. I just think it's really important, language wise.
Have you seen one on what, sorry?
Yeah, I read it.
That's a really good point.
Yeah. So I just think as we continue to talk and explore what we're doing, I think that language is very important to be attentive to, for the community especially.
And I wish, and I can't say this enough, there's no silver bullet. So I can, we can make any suggestion. And anybody, any reasonable person can make an argument against it. It's the reality. I think that where the CDC is coming from, the reason we have this meeting tonight is because they basically said everything we're trying, the only thing you, okay, let's put it this way. The only thing you haven't tried is not having the students in school for a period of time, remote education. That's what you haven't tried yet. So that's, that's where, that's why we're here.
And you don't think that the fact that, that the students were already out for November? Well, see, so November 22nd is a Monday, so you've got to take the two days before that and the weekend, then the whole.
They're leaving on the 19th, that's a surprise.
So wouldn't that kind of be that time that they would be away?
So that's nine days. And that's initially, when, when you guys made the decision as a school committee to change that Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving to remote. That's what, that was, that was basically the selling point there. Exactly what we're just saying, is that gives them nine days. But what I'm saying, which, which part of the recommendation, what the CDC outbreak team is saying is that during that week, which you would like to, I would like to think that during the week of Thanksgiving, that people are spending more time with their families and less time having the opportunity to be with friends. It's not, not perfect, but you know, that's, that's what could be happening. And then the, it just like last year when we had all the restrictions on travel and out of state. And while those don't exist anymore, the concerns still exist. So hypothetically, kids go away, they go to, they, they have either, you know, people, family visiting, or they go away to visit. And there's more intermingling. And so the thought was, if we, if we didn't have school the week after Thanksgiving, then anybody that had a potential exposure during Thanksgiving break would have that point, what would be the quarantine period for everybody to either determine that they get it, which would be all community spread or not. And in any of the case, when we come back to school on what would be?
29?
Nope. Yes. No, the, if you went with that week after, December. December 6, yes. Then essentially, everybody would theoretically be able to return to school because nobody would be in quarantine. The only people would be out of anybody who tested positive, with zero close contacts. Then if you think about it, if you look at the calendar, I think then, I thought I might hear this today in terms of that recommendation. Then we go approximately two weeks, maybe a little more than two weeks, and then we're off for Christmas break. So.
There's only close contacts from school.
Right.
Day chairs, you know.
Yeah, but we're not in close contact, except we're going to be responsible for, for maintaining or checking.
They're going to have it remote because they're going to have, you know, they're going to be quarantined in CDC.
Correct, correct.
So even if it's a community spread, we have to deal with it.
Yes. So.
Let's just go back. Are you suggesting that in the, the second week, are we teaching remote that whole first week of December and everything?
Great clarification. And no, at no point, well, one of the things that I didn't put in, like, if you want to think about what's best for just giving teachers some relief, doesn't do anything for the parents in a positive way. If Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving, that was, we don't have any school at all, and we add those two days to the end of the year, that's, 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 that's the absolute best break for the teachers in terms of not doing that. They're not asking for that. I have to say that. Oh, they might be, no. Last I knew, they were not asking for that. They, they were satisfied with the remote because they felt it was the best scenario where we essentially have nine days. That was the initial thinking of nine days of, of students not interacting with each other here in, here in the school. And they can do what they need to for remote. And remote doesn't require that, that teachers and/or students are having seven hours of screen time. That would be bad for remote education.
I have a, I have kind of a compromise. What if we treated those, that Monday and Tuesday like we used to treat the Wednesdays where it was independent learning? So it wouldn't have to extend the school year. But yet, it could be something that goes out ahead so the teachers can get great.
I'm not opposed to that. The, the issue with that is going to be simply this. It sounds a little crazy. We have a half-day tomorrow, and that's the last opportunity we have to plan for. So whatever we just, another reason why we're to be tonight. Whatever we're willing to do, we want to be able to communicate to, to the teachers tomorrow. So that doesn't give much opportunity.
Julia, yes, that's Julie, right?
Where?
Behind the mask.
No.
Megan?
Kristen.
Kristen, that's close, right?
Kristen, did you?
So unfortunately, those remote learning days with students where they are assigned work they're supposed to do, I can speak for my middle schooler that there's virtually nothing. Those days have been more of a joke, and anything that might be given is completed in an hour or less and not really effective. My high school student, a little better. And I think some of that is the high-level classes that that student is taking. And they're getting more attention than the kids or in the average classes. The remote learning has not been a positive experience. We've been doing this for almost two years, and I still feel like a lot of it has not been figured out. And it's extremely frustrating as a parent who also works in healthcare, who has been dealing with this for almost two years now as well. And unfortunately, my husband and I do not have the ability to stay home with our children, because he's in healthcare as well, and teach our children and make sure that they are getting the attention that they need academically because they were not getting that in the Zooms and the education they were getting while they were removed. The healthcare world is already extremely, extremely short. And to pull more people out of the field to stay at home and teach their children while they were removed. And to pull more people out of the field to stay at home and teach their children because they're not getting effective education from the school seems counterproductive. I feel like we're chasing our tail with it. And, and I guess my ultimate question is, are we trying to slow the spread of COVID by closing the school or are we trying to maintain teaching levels? Because I think they're two totally different things.
And I'm mutually exclusive though.
No, they're not mutually exclusive. I, I agree. But if we're trying to slow the spread, I don't think closing schools is the answer. Because we know the most of it, a lot, a large majority of it is occurring outside of school.
We do know that. I, 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 I just need to take exception with, and I, I understand it's where most people are coming from. I respectfully disagree with the whole, the whole notion. I, I think, um, and I'm, I'm an old guy, so I go back a long ways in terms of, uh, structure of school and lesson planning and such. Um, school lessons, there is, I think it's a misnomer to think that, um, there's new and in-depth learning every single day in school. That's probably a, a myth that has existed forever. I think it's a hope. So I think what you see when kids get work coming home, um, it is what we refer to, Madalena Hunter would refer to as independent practice. For some people, it is gonna be a short, um, look, but it's also in terms of new terms, it's called summative, I mean, formative assessments. So they do their work, they, they commit, it's, it's work you wanna believe they can do independently without the teacher there guided. That would be guided practice. Uh, that they can do that. And then they turn it in and it sort of affirms that they, or confirms that the, the students know how to do it. So there's not, there's not an expectation that work that comes home on remote days or is asked to be done on remote, remote days is really rigorous. Um, having said that, I think our teachers did a fairly good job last year of, um, we try, you know, we really emphasized, I don't know to what extent that it also shouldn't be just busy work. Don't send home five worksheets and, or coloring books and, and say, color these five pictures and, you know, at the grade level, hopefully not for middle school, uh, or a high school. Uh, but it, but it's somewhere in there. And that's why the whole sense of time, you're giving the staff time, um, to be able to, to think what those independent day, independent learning days or those remote learning days should look like. They're not, I, I heard that a lot last year. It's a joke. Well, I hear from somebody, it's a joke, they only work an hour. And somebody else said, my kid worked five hours, you know, we don't really know it. I'm not, I'm trying, not trying to dismiss what you're saying. I totally, I've heard it a lot.
When you turn around and look at Nubia scores and the lack of change from fifth grade to seventh grade, and you're like, what's the difference here? This, this has been pandemic.
Yeah.
And they haven't been getting it. The, the focus might be on the kids who are down here way behind or the kids who are up here and excelling, but those kids who just haven't moved but are reading the basic guidelines, those kids are getting left behind.
Yeah.
And it's impacting them psychologically in a, in a major way. So I'm really fearful of sending them remote again and them not being given, um, the chance to succeed.
Sending them remote for a week, we're just gonna keep repeating that.
Okay, I, I understand, but that we know that the pandemic is not going away anytime soon. It's gonna happen again at Christmas, it's gonna happen again at February break, it's gonna happen again at April vacation. I mean, COVID, regardless of whether you're vaccinated or not, COVID is here and it's spreading. So whether, you know, it's this weekend when my college age student comes home and potentially spreads it, or whether it's over Thanksgiving, there's no difference.
Yep, agreed.
There really, there really isn't. So how often are we gonna keep doing this?
I don't know. That's a great question. But all I'm saying from the CDC, not from me, but from the CDC is that we haven't tried this yet. And they feel like we need to try to reset, um, and, and see where that goes. The other thing I wanna clarify for everybody is keep talking, I mean, I, and I brought this up at the beginning. We had 80% of our students in person, 80% of the time, four days a week last year. So comparatively speaking, our kids got far more education last year than most of the school systems in our area. Except for the people who were, who were in the, the, you know, the, the, I don't wanna say the, but there are the places that certainly did five days a week. Um, and I can't imagine what those teachers look like at the end of the year. Uh, I don't want to chuckle, it's not funny. Um, but last year, our kids compared to the majority of the schools in the state of Maine, we got 40% of their in-person learning. Our kids get 80%, full day, anybody who wanted to be here. So, um, this year, um, more and more schools are going with remote options because they, they tried not to and they reached the breaking point, which, uh, the CDC feels like we have to. And, um, so I think we, we, we try, my, their suggestion is that we try a week of, of, uh, remote learning on top of the vacation that happens to be there. And who knows, it could be a miserable failure. I'll be the first to admit that.
Joe? Yeah, just wanted to follow up because it's starting to get, we're actually starting to get into a resolution or something, I begin to feel it. Your name was Jack one back there, right?
Yeah.
I didn't get the last name, so.
Clarkson.
Clarkson.
Clarkson, okay. Can you just explain, maybe a little bit further for me? Were you speaking in favor of going remote for a longer period of time?
I was in favor of going remote all the way through summer. I would love it. If school would just say, we're all remote through summer or at least are remote option and 80% full day, I would be right on it. I would need to be here right now, I would like to know what would happen.
Okay, so, so my question to you is this. We already know that the quality of teaching remotely varies.
Yeah.
Uh, everyone tries their best, but it still varies.
Yeah.
Some students can do it in a short period of time. Some people are totally frustrated, can't get it at all. What are we going to do if we turn loose? You know, i- i- if we go to remote for many days, students are gonna do something in those other hours besides the remote. Are they gonna be collecting downtown? Are they gonna be collecting each other's houses? I don't know, but you know, we talked about community spread. I'm concerned that by having remote over an extended period, we're just asking for it. The students are not gonna stay home, they're not gonna watch TV, they're, they're gonna be out there somewhere.
I guess, I guess my feeling on that is that's something that's happening. Students are already staying together after school and hanging out with friends and things like that.
And I agree with you. I totally agree with you.
I don't think not going remote is gonna stop them from something else. I think it's up to us the parents to believe whether our kids are, are supporting other people. And if, like, if kids are remote, then it's more of a responsibility on parents to not say, oh, you've done your schoolwork. A lot of people in town, they go wherever they want. It's up to the kids and the community to govern and say, you're done your schoolwork, but since for a lot of COVID, we're just gonna stay home, feel free to play outside on our jobs. It's not a fully responsibility to pick, you know, whether the kids are either people that hang out or stay outside.
Well, well, let me say that, that although I think there are many people that agree with you, schools should be involved in social issues. Okay, that's not the case. That's, that's not the way it's happening today. And I think the other problem becomes is that, although I'm a little older than the superintendent, not by very much, I'm still a better golfer, okay? But I had a mother that basically was as tough as any mother could have been, but I still figure out the house and do things. I'm just concerned by saying, I'm still a believer that the school is the best place we should be.
And I guess we just differ on that because I just don't see how children are safer in a public school than they are in your own private home where their parents or guardians tend to choose who they're with when there's such a high level of COVID in just.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna stop that because I, I'd like other people who haven't had a chance to speak to have a chance to speak. Is there somebody on Zoom? Okay, thank you.
So the next person on the list is Lydia Longsack.
Hi, thank you. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
You're good.
Okay, um, I just really had a few comments that I wanted to say. First is that last year, the remote learning really was lacking. And I know some people think that it wasn't. But I had children in middle school and in grade school and they'd come home and they'd be done their work. You know, half an hour, 45 minutes and their grades suffered, their education suffered. The whole goal of school is to teach our children. If we go remote, we're not teaching our kids. You're gonna give them a packet, be like, oh, here you go. There was no instruction. So I wanna know is if we go remote, what is it gonna look like? Are there actually going to be instruction? You know, are the teachers actually gonna teach?
Yes, thank you.
I, I don't know if you're listening to me, but I already addressed that with respect to the work that is expected during remote learning. It is not the same. Especially last year was a perfect example. We had kids in school 80% of the time. So the 20%, they weren't. And, and I would, I made it pretty clear to the staff that they were not expected to do, uh, the specific instruction on those remote days because.
Yeah, but that's the problem. That's the problem is that it's not expected. So kids aren't learning. There has to be expectations or you're failing the children. That is your job as teachers. It is the job of the teachers to teach the child.
So can I just say that when you have kids in school, five days a week, we do not do new instruction or deeper instruction every single day. There's a lot of summative or formative assignments that happen to check for understanding. We have guided practice, we have new learning. There's, there's multiple layers to it. Where, uh, on Wednesdays last year, it really was focused on what we would have called independent practice. Uh, I, I guess I just respectfully disagree. And I've done it for a long time that, that, and I know that high school, uh, particularly some of our global classes, they still did their classes remote. They still did the full, uh, amount of time. And they instructed the whole time because they're, they're at a different level. But now I also would say that I think our kids got, um, additional instruction time last year because they were in school 80% of the time.
Yeah, but 80% is not enough. They need to be there 100% of the time and the teachers need to be teaching. I had an eighth grader last year and she might've gotten five minutes of face-to-face time with her teachers just to check in, say, hey, how are you? Here's your assignment for the day. That's unacceptable. I wanna know, is teaching actually going to happen if we go remote? You can't just give a child a packet and not explain how to do it and teach them. That's the job.
Thank you.
There's a lady here.
Yeah.
Me? Yes. All right. Hi guys, I'm Chelsea Silver. I know a lot of you here. Um, I, um, understand the levels of stress. Um, I myself have two really stressful jobs. I'm a real estate broker and I'm a real estate freezer. I'm up sometimes working until midnight, working on reports. Um, I actually normally wear a mask whenever I meet clients or go to people's homes. I came in here today deliberately not wearing one because it's not mandated, um, but that's not the only reason. It's because I see several teachers and staff members in the community, at stores, at gatherings, close to other people, not wearing a mask. So you're telling me people are stressed out, all this. Uh, they want time off, they're worried about community spread. When I see, and I'm not gonna call people out, I'm not gonna accuse people, I'm not that kind of person. But it really, really bothers me when I see people that are teachers. For example, yesterday at Target, I saw three teachers, um, with all their masks on. Um, I think you need to be by example. And if that's truly the case, and these teachers are asking us for our support, then you need to show us that you truly are living this and this is what you really want. Um, I had lots of people messaging me that couldn't be here tonight, that also had other things they wanted to say. Um, we've already addressed this. This part is happening outside of the school. I feel very safe with my kids in school, masking, going to school. Um, I'm just, I'm really not worried about them being at school. Um, allowing video feed in the classroom, we went two years ago when this all first started, that was shut down so quickly. I think a lot of this with parents being concerned with their kids going remote or having to quarantine. Why aren't we allowing video of that teacher teaching instruction to save them from having to do two separate lesson plans and to do two separate classes? It's, it's, I don't know, to me, it seems like a no brainer. So much stress can be relieved because of that. Um, 15 to 30 minute remote day instruction, I know you've already covered it. My daughter was full remote last year. She got high honors because of the nature of my work. I can't be home quite a bit, not always. If we do these half day Wednesdays, I'm not gonna say that my kids might have to miss a few of them. Uh, when I have work scheduled out three weeks to go do an appraisal, I'm, and if you know the market right now and you know how long people are waiting for our freezers, I'm not gonna cancel on them. My kids are probably gonna have to go to work with me that morning. But last year, the only reason my daughter got high honors is because I wrote her, I heard the class instruction. I kept after her and not all parents can offer that kind of support. I know you all know that as teachers, that not all parents are supportive in every way. I think most parents want, so what's, what's best for their kids. But I don't, I don't know, I just don't see it happening. And the remote part of it with her, um, she was doing great, but there were so many kids that would log on and didn't do their classwork. I think a lot of that could be eliminated by video feed, the teachers being able to see who is on that class. They don't necessarily have to have the student audio on if they're distracted, distracted or distracting the other classmates. But I, I just don't understand the premise for not allowing a video of the teacher instructing at that time, whether it be live or whether it not be. It forms a sense, and I've heard this from several parents, of distrust of teachers. What's going on in the classroom that they don't wanna see? I'm, I'm sure you guys have heard that, but that's one of the big things I've heard. Um, seeing teachers, I already went over that one. Uh, school has been trying to get Wednesdays as half days before COVID. Um, I don't know how many of you have heard this, quite a few years ago, I went to a school board meeting and it was brought up that teachers really wanted to have Wednesdays half days. Other communities were doing that. So I'm kind of questioning, is this a COVID thing or is this gonna be ongoing forever with having a half day Wednesday? Um, Kids Club, um, it is such a valuable asset in our community. I mean, we're trying to get rid of Kids Club from handling this. We're also putting it out there that Kids Club is also going to become a school issue. So school's gonna be running it. But what happens with our sports? Um, what, the YMCA runs our sports programs. What happens then? Is the school gonna run that? Um, Kids Club is a big part of their funding. Um, so if we lose them, I mean, what's gonna happen? What are their consequences? Are our kids not gonna have sports, you know? I mean, they offer us so much as parents. And I appreciate Monty so much for everything that he has done. If you don't understand how much stress this man is under. I get emails from him sometimes late at night informing us of games the next day, they're gonna be canceled. Hey, so-and-so, we've got a quarantine. He's amazing. Um, are there errors in laws in every system? Absolutely. The school is not perfect. I am not perfect. Nothing is perfect. Uh, I don't think that taking that away from, um, Kids Club, making it a school run thing is necessarily a good thing. It shows some separation. I don't think everything should be school's control. Um, Melissa, you brought up, I've been writing notes a little bit too, as you were speaking, um, that your daughter tested positive on day 14. So why is pool testing effective if we're testing kids three or four days in and still allowing them to be at school? Then you keep testing them and then once they test positive, they leave, already exposed to all those other kids. So I don't see the logic behind that. Um, and then, um, why are we not allowing? I've seen the emails going out, why are we not allowing vaccinated and masked parents? But that branch has to volunteer.
We are.
We are.
Yes.
So, I mean, the other thing is, so good, I'm glad. So if we're allowing that, why don't we have those parents say, hey, can you do two hours of coffee or do me? I saw a parent, a teacher parent post on Facebook. I have to go all the way to the other end to get coffees. Why don't we have somebody ask parents to come in, hey, can you call the parents? Like, I would love to hear from my son's teacher, hey, can you volunteer a couple hours to make coffees for me or read it or do something so I can do some planning? Instead of taking that time away from parents that really need to work. I mean, I'm so fortunate, my husband is so fortunate that we have the jobs that we have. But we have zero family support. My mom is dead, my dad is an alcoholic and my, all my other family has passed away, everybody. Um, I have nobody, but we're fortunate enough to make this work. And I know several other community members and family members, not family members, excuse me, parents that have that same situation, that you're not gonna trust your kid to stay with somebody or a family member that you don't trust them with, that you don't think they're safe with. So I think school is really the best place for them. Um, yeah, when you have no family, your friends are your family. So for Thanksgiving, I have no family. I am gonna go spend time with my friends. It's just, it's the way it's gonna be. I'm not gonna isolate myself. I'm not gonna stay home. Um, yeah, so that's, that's what I have to say about that. Oh, one other thing, substitutes. What are you paying substitutes to come in and serve?
It's $90.
$90. Five years ago, Lewiston was paying $110 a day. I'm, we have COVID mind. Can we do something quickly and urgently? If you do a temporary $150 a day, If you do a temporary $150 a day, that you're going to pay substitutes to come in, I guarantee you money talks, you're going to get people to come in and substitute for you and cover those staffing issues.
I have a question for you.
I'm going to stay standing.
Sure. All right. So, um, and then I want to address something else. So my question for you is this. If we allow a live video feed of a classroom or
Not in the classroom, on the teacher.
Same.
The instruction. So, because I don't, I wouldn't really want people that I don't know watching my children.
Okay, for what I'm watching with it.
Yeah, no, it's not. It's not the same.
Okay. If we allow a video feed of the teacher, um, who gets to decide who the teacher pays attention to? The students who are in class or the students who are watching on video remote?
So this is exactly how it happened. We hired remote teachers last year, so I can answer this very easily. Did you have a remote teacher for your kid last year?
I've got more things to say.
But did you?
No.
Okay, so I can answer this along with public media demonstration. The remote teachers were teaching the class. Students would raise their hand in the Google Classroom and they had a little thing where they could raise their hand. They couldn't blurt out questions, the same as the ideal classroom would be handled. Kids would just be blurting out, interrupting. In a way for me and for my daughter, she loved it because she's like, ah, so-and-so isn't disrupting all the time and I'm actually learning more. It was great for her, not so great for the 80% of the other kids that took remote learning as, oh yeah, I don't have to go to school and I can sleep in. But, so the kids would raise their hand. The teacher could check periodically to see if students have questions. The same as if you're in class, I know this at the high school level, you're in a class, your teacher teaches a class, you have questions. You're in your homeroom, I believe it is, I don't know if there's any high school teachers here, but I think during homeroom time, it's another time where students can go keep talk to their teachers and ask questions. Great opportunity for that.
So, okay. How do we handle a situation where every single student in the physical classroom has questions that takes up the entire class and so
I've never, you're so lucky.
You're so lucky.
No, I'm not lucky because not only have I worked in the school, but I've also been a student in the past too. There's, I mean, that's a teaching point. And if you are a good teacher, you have good classroom management, you should be able to answer that question and say, hey, if you have more, you know, you need more information or you need more help, come see me during homeroom.
Okay, so I have some more questions.
Yeah.
Because if you have thoughts and answers that we should be thinking about.
No, I'm just, and I'm a parent, I'm obviously not a professional. I'm offering and asking things that other parents in the community want to know.
Sure.
And again, I am not anti-school or anti-teachers. I am super, super happy that all these teachers are working and administrators are working. However, I think those that are out in the community need to also be by example. And I think we need new ideas because shutting school down and going remote for a week or for two weeks or whatever is not going to stop the stressors. They're going to come back when you return to school. It might refresh you for a week or so, the same as anyone who goes on vacation, but when you return and you're like, ugh, it's back in your face again.
So you, you have, you have your own questions, your own information, plus you're representing some other people. So I'm asking you for some feedback so that we can take this into mind. So please don't get defensive.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just giving you my info.
We can't fill every staff position that we currently have open. Period. That's
And that's an ongoing though. That's an ongoing for COVID.
So how do we then fill extra positions? If we can't fill the positions that we put?
Money talks. And if you have people out there, you're asking me, and I don't, I'm not going to tell you what I hate. But if you're asking me to come and stop at your school and you're offering me $90 a day, when I could sit home and do all my housework and everything else and do all my errands, do everything else that I want to do or perhaps get unemployment. You have to make it so that people want to come work for you and you get quality people to come work for you. Who are you going to get for $90 a day? Are you going to get someone in that classroom that is genuinely interested in following those teachers' plans?
Do you understand that we have to budget our money into
I, I do, but I also understand that there is a, still a large sum of money that the town office is holding for COVID funds that
That's not true.
That's not.
It is, because I, I called and I asked, there's, there's emergency COVID funds. And this is something that you're talking about
I'm thinking maybe general assistance funds.
Okay.
Which is not something we can draw.
So a lot of this money is being spent on other things when it could, like, I'm not disregarding pool testing. I'm not discounting it, excuse me, I'm not discounting pool testing. However, I think there's a lot of money being spent when we could be spending money to get more teachers in, have more attractive salaries or get more substitutes in. It's, I'm just wondering if this money is all being spent, it's already all been spent, then why are we only offering people $90 a day to substitute?
Okay. I'm going to move on from that.
Yeah.
And I want to address another thing that you
Yeah.
When we were talking at the beginning of this meeting about Kids Club and whether we would consider it community spread, that spread or school spread, we were in no way saying that we were going to take over Kids Club.
Okay.
Period. None. Lonnie and, I don't know, I'm sorry, Jeff would still be in charge of that. They would still be doing that, they would just have to follow the school's protocol. And then we could potentially consider that as school spread. However, we've already discussed if we're going to follow the CDC rules, unfortunately, one of those rules is that we can't consider the Kids Club a school spread situation.
Okay.
Okay, so I was just a little bit concerned that you maybe didn't understand that part of our conversation when you said that you were so concerned that we were going to take over Kids Club.
Well, it just seems like a lot of the criteria, it's taking over a lot of what they've already established. And I thought as far as I knew, isn't everyone wearing masks at Kids Club? So, um, and the same as at school because they're wearing masks inside, but they're not wearing them outside. Um, I just don't see the difference, but
Well, the difference would have been that we would have been able to follow the same quarantining protocol as if a student in a classroom was, and they were involved in pool testing. But if it's an out of, if it's not a school thing, then we have to consider it community spread.
Okay.
And the quarantining rules are different.
So how would, how would it be different for in school versus community?
If it's in school, that if they're in pool testing, they don't have to quarantine.
Right. So that's, because that's what's happening a lot at the grade school is that the kids who are in the Kids Club, um, if they're close contact, they're having a quarantine even if they're pool testing.
Yeah, I just, I think there should be a separation between school and different Okay. I mean, this isn't even a school, and it's at home all the time. It's not a school-sponsored event. It's not something that's sponsored by the school.
I just want, want to be really clear, what you're saying is the opposite of what, of what we're talking about. If what we did, what we do is what you're saying now. Kids Club is a separate, totally separate.
Right.
And so even, even though they generally follow our guidelines, they're still considered by the CDC outbreak team as a, as a outside-of-school type thing. So they can't be in pool testing. The, the consideration here is to say, let's assure, guarantee on some, some level, whatever. And we could certainly, I have no issue, Lonnie's been a longtime friend of mine, um, talk about what that might look like so that it would be more akin to what I said. I was used to in another district. If they are connected to the school and we are guaranteeing, for the lack of a better term, that they are following our guidelines, then those kids that are, um, close contacts that are in pool testing can stay in school.
Okay.
That's what we want.
That would save a lot of families quarantine time.
Okay.
But that's not happening.
I just, I know, I just always like, I'm dealing with individual, um, outside-of-school program and entities are kind of mandated by school on roles at the time. Um, I just, I always feel like that's such a concern.
What are we mandating? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you know, taking over like the, the testing and everything of the program. I just, yeah.
All right, just a last Sorry, we need to move on, but I just need to say if we don't connect those programs, they can't.
A lot more people.
It's, 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 it's black and white. They can't, the pool testing, they're way down.
It doesn't matter. They can test them.
Okay.
Thank you, Jesse.
Yeah.
I have a clarifying question. I just have a clarified question. Um, what is the policy for, is there a policy for remote instruction that allows for the live streaming or is that something that the trip does not do?
No, that's a great question and I'm glad you asked that so I can clarify it for people. Right now, when we started a year ago, so last fall, uh, and we had those number of days before the, we, we started school late to give people more time to prepare. Um, the, the, in the terminology that you probably know, because you do, is asynchronous or asynchronous. And, and people given the option to do both, I mean, to do either. High school by and large chose to do it synchronously and they are, um, still doing it pretty much synchronously. Um, the middle school teachers didn't want to and I'm not going to get into judgments about why. And the grade schools, um, for the most part chose not to, so they're pretty much doing it asynchronous, asynchronously.
Yes, Sue. Okay. So I have some folks that asked me to read comments.
Okay.
Um, the first one comes from Amy McMillan. My children are listening and they are asking why you were only talking about the teachers and not the kids. This was a long time ago.
Yeah, sure.
I'm a patient.
Sure.
Um, the second comment was, is the fact that teachers are not required to be vaccinated leading to the increase in teacher, in teacher cases as much as or more than interactions at school? And our third comment was, I keep hearing what people don't understand. Sorry, it's a really old time. Uh, I'm sorry. I understand that all of our jobs are complicated in the same ways. I apologize, Amy, to capture your comment accurately. Um, Caroline Peaslee says, unfortunately, hold on just a second. No, I'm just going to get my glasses out.
That's sunglasses.
Good.
It's with my wife.
I'm in denial. Unfortunately, every business is short-staffed, current-staffed, are overwhelmed and stressed out. This is not school-centered and there is no good answer. All of us working parents are juggling enormous stress to get our kids educated but maintaining our jobs. It's the reality of life during this pandemic. And then the last comment to be read and if somebody would like to speak. This is the first time I heard that there was a spread that has happened at school. Is what she heard Melissa say. This is, yeah.
Yes, yes.
How do you know that there has been a school-wide spread? Is that an assumption or is that fact? And we have several people that would like to see.
I think it's their turn.
Yes. Should Melissa differentiate the difference between community spread and school spread? Or have we discussed that?
I mean, I can just speak on that.
Yes, but I think just speak to that question.
Yeah, so when, when we have a classroom that is quarantined, right? Those kids are out of school, 10-day quarantine. Highly recommend testing, some choose not to, some do. Majority of people are testing and typically when they test, whether we, I've been offering pre-pre testing or they go in laundry and testing is hard to come by these days. Um, so if I can try to offer, I do. Um, many people have seen me out there, um, in my stuff and swabbing the kitchen. They're awesome and they're just amazing, but we test them. And when someone's in quarantine, that's when I'm saying transmission. When they've been in quarantine and they test positive. So they've been exposed at school. I tip it some at times, a staff member or another child and they're in quarantine. We've been seeing not just one, multiple positives in those, in those kiddos that are in quarantine. And that is a fact. And this is why the CDC is calling us almost every day. When I'm reporting a positive, they're asking, you know, where, where, where they were or what kind of exposure was it?
Is it possible that they didn't get it from the teacher? That they could have gotten it some other place in the community? I mean, it sounds a possibility.
I mean, those, I have to say, I can speak on behalf of those that I know, couple, most have really have said they only come to school or they always mask when they're out in public. If parents are crying in tears, are those kiddos that were remote last grade school? Don't go to daycare, don't do anything but come to school. So I tend to speak on behalf of many. And, and majority of the kids are, well, there's been a few asymptomatic that test around day five. The recommendation is immediately and then day five to seven. Um, and I can count on probably one hand that they are asymptomatic kiddos that test positive.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, how about one more from Zoom?
Um, Isaiah Levy, have a public comment.
Hi, am I muted? I don't know.
Oh, hi, we can hear you.
Oh, hi, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. Um, let me preface my opinions and statements, um, with the fact that I am a parent of a child who contracted COVID and was symptomatic. Um, he was symptomatic for about 36 hours and he was out fishing the next day. Um, the biggest pain was the quarantine. At no time did I fear for my child's life. So let me, let me, let me just make that clear. Um, I'm concerned at the onset of this meeting, um, when the ma'am that first began to speak, she spoke a little bit about the student. Um, but she really went very quickly to the stress, the condition of the teachers. And I get that. I fully understand that, I appreciate that and I, I don't take that lightly. But I think the first statement out of the mouth should have been the focus of the student for the first couple paragraphs of the statement. And I, 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 I worry with this, this committee. Whenever a decision or policy or action plan is made, there should be defined outcome, there should be a defined goal. There should be some measure that we can say, you know what? Let's compare our actions to these stated goals. Did we meet them? Did we not meet them? This, I'm, I've worked in medicine for a long time and everything we do is evidence-based. And the decisions that this school system made last year to shut down, you, you gave us the same, um, evidence. You said teachers are tired, kids are getting sick, people are getting whirled out. Um, this is not good, we need to shut down. Okay, so we gave you that. We shut down last year, didn't we, correct? We did. And you said, work with us, we'll make this work. We start this new year and once again, we're, we've, we've got this nebulous of opinions, this nebulous of what we should do. There has not been a single definitive game plan action from this committee. What to follow on, steps will be. We closed for four weeks. You haven't shown me any, any diversion of your tactics that's going to tell me it's going to work different this time. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. And I'm also going to touch on the teaching and this is no slam on teachers. I understand teachers are trying to put together game plans, teaching lessons, um, itineraries. I, I fully understand that. But the number one job of the school system, it's, it's not to make kids feel warm and fuzzy. It's to educate them. And with this remote process of, of five, 10 minutes work here, five, 10 minutes work there, that is not effective. You meant, I, I don't know what the superintendent labeled that method of teaching, that method of instruction, that may be, you know, there may be science behind that. It may seem good in theory, but to tell me that my eighth grader is struggling severely, severely, severely with algebra because the remote instruction is not adequate. I have to make up the difference and the lack of education provided in this remote model with hiring a tutor. And I will do that because my child deserves the opportunity to have a quality education. And if this committee refuses to adapt, I understand, last year you were figuring it out. This year, you guys have had months and months to game plan this and there's no action plan for quality education. You, like, like someone previously mentioned, they have been doing it in college for years. There's a video lecture where you get taught, you don't just review. That is, I disagree with the superintendent's previous statement. You can learn new information on a video instruction class. That is, that is fact. I, I have a degree. I, if you want to sit down and discuss whether it works, we can meet offline and meet sometime. But I beg and plead with this committee, before they make a decision that affects so many people, at least have the courtesy to develop an action plan so we can assess at the end whether it's worked or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody in person? Just before you do, is there anybody new who would like to speak?
Well, no.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
As the CDC command you share with them the fact that we're, we're going to close before the weekend Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Not close, sorry. We're going to, we're going to
Yes.
Bar meditation and then we're going to do a couple. Is that not good enough for them?
Well, I think that they're, they're the ones that Well, I think that they're, they're the ones that brought up the notion of, uh, and again, it goes back to last year. Where, where we have restrictions on travel. And even though we don't have restrictions on travel, the reality of travel is, is, um, is there. I can make the argument that already have, and I can't defend it. Um, that, you know, what people do when they're not here, I have no control. So, you know, the CDC's only position is they're looking for a longer period of time. That the students are not, at least in theory, not together. Uh, they're with their families. And then coming back from Thanksgiving, uh, we would anticipate that there might be more exposure because of Thanksgiving. The nature of, of family getting together or opportunity for exposure.
And all just the community, the, the school exposure, not per se, the community that's up and you can do, I mean.
Right.
You can call people, do, and they, they interact with people from, you know, they like to jump on a plane and go to New York on a sale meeting. You're not going to stop them from doing that.
Correct.
We can't stop that, we can stop the school. I don't, I don't want to start a bigger, bigger subject. But have we even thought of, I'm aware that there's, there's an event at the high school on the following weekend. Um, the vacation, uh, if we go remote like that, are we, are we shutting the schools down?
The, uh, the school committee is going to discuss that next week.
Okay, that's the next week.
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't like that, I don't like that.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Because we could be, we'll be here all night and all morning, but, um, but that's another.
We're gonna talk about that another time, Joe.
Well, no, I, I want to, can I just expand on that? But really, the question has to come up before this committee. Is this not going to have any sports practices?
Yeah, yeah.
This is a long period of time.
During this remote town.
During this remote period of time.
That is legitimate question.
Okay.
But I just, I just think maybe the, the larger area dedicated to being away. Can we try that and see how that, that goes? That's nine days, I mean, how?
That's why the very first option, I'm not tipping my hands. If I was going to choose one of the remote options, um, I would prefer to see it the week after Thanksgiving. Um, but the very first thing that's on here is that they've already made the decision, this committee's already made the decision. Um, I don't know that it's enough, but I think it's, uh. It, it is something. So, I, I want to, can I go back? Cause I, I want to tie into what you're saying, but I, I respectfully disagree with what this gentleman was saying. The, we have kept track of the number of cases, we kept track of, of the positive. We do have a plan to flatten the lines or, or flatten the curve, so to speak. And we've worked with the CDC outbreak, um, team to take a look at all of the things that are possible for schools to be doing. With respect to, um, flattening the curve for, for, um, COVID. So our, our goal has been, has been clearly stated multiple times. And what they're saying now is that everything that we've done. And it, and it's like, the gentleman said he was a, a medical professional, and I know, and you all know, if you have children, that when you go in, they're going to do the least invasive thing. And they're going to build up to, to the one that, that sort of hurts the most. And, um, from the CDC's perspective, that's kind of where they're at now. So you probably need to consider a remote extended period of time. Um, so I, 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 I guess I'm maybe a little defensive. I, I've seen how hard this, this committee has worked, how hard the teachers were, people to try and, and, you know, to keep saying. Uh, a couple of comments about the students, but this is 100% about the students. Um, and sort of what, you know, how do we set from the beginning? We want to keep them in school. And that is our ultimate goal, talking about an end game, whatever is. If we, if we shut down, no, if we go remote, thank you, for a period of time. And the net result of that is that we're back in school five days a week for the rest of the year. That would be the ideal. That would be the ideal. Um, so that is what, that is ultimately what we're hoping to do.
Is there, uh, is there a, a goal for the school committee to discuss any parameters around the construction? So it sounds like that's an issue that parents have concerns. Is that something that, you know, you said that there are sort of general policies around it and how it works? Is that something that would be, you know, a way to communicate and support parents in this thing? That there's some sort of conversation about what that remote instruction qualities we look for or?
So all I can, we've had that conversation a number of times at the school committee level, we still can. I, I just respectfully disagree. And I think people don't, um, do the job of teaching, that don't understand that if you know you're going to have people out for a certain period of time. You know, the, the high school actually gave me a little bit of pushback, um, because they thought I was saying they couldn't do instruction. I just was trying to explain to them that, um, and I asked it very simply, do you do, and you're a teacher, I'm not going to quit on the spot. But do you do instruction or in-depth instruction every single day? Uh, most people, and I talked for a lot of years, I've been doing a shot for 38 years. That, that's not, uh, that's not realistic. Uh, so for one day a week, we do independent learning or whatever the case may be. So it's, 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 uh, while the gentleman is correct, certainly you can do instruction. By recording and whatever the case may be, like they do in colleges, like we do in, in the high school. Um, that is not what people have chosen to do. And they have focused on the notion of, um, on those days, they do independent reading. Some of them, the assignment is, is reading, I'm sorry, I said independent instruction, independent work. Some of that might be reading and, and responding, which is a very legitimate, um, uh, activity for schools. Uh, doesn't require guided practice, doesn't require new instruction. I, I guess it's just, I, I, as long as this, as long as this conversation has been going on. Uh, for the two-plus years that I've been involved in it, is that sort of sense of that schools are all about. Um. Making it, I mean, they always talk about rigor, 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 rigor. And I'm, and I'm 100% for that, we want our kids to get a strong, solid education. Um, but it doesn't mean that we, that we have an expectation that we're all. First of all, any, I mean, this has gone way off topic, but any homework, that type of stuff that causes students a level of frustration should be looked at. Um. Should be looked at as whether it's necessary or whether it's accomplishing the mission. Um, we should not be stressing our kids out at home with what we ask them to do. Conversely, and this has been a legitimate thing, I've heard from parents over and over again. It should not be, like I said before, follow these five pictures and, you know, whatever. It's got to be, it's got to be somewhere in the middle. And we do have to trust our teachers to be given the time to plan and deliver, um, that work, whether it's remotely. Or independent learning, uh, days we did, sort of a combination of both. So I, I think we've had it, we, we certainly could have it again. But I, I think to say to our teachers that they have to do synchronous learning. Um, I, we, we went down that road pretty, uh, long ways last year and decided we did not want to do that.
Anybody new?
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, so I kind of wear two hats. I mean, I think all of us wear a lot of hats during the day, but, um, I'm speaking on behalf of a kindergarten teacher. Um, at the grade school and also as a parent of three kids under the age of seven. Um, and I just, sorry, I'm a little nervous. So I just want to, um, kind of put a couple of things in perspective. I know a lot of us are already thinking about. Um, if we do decide to go remote. Um, as a parent and a teacher, it is, um, nearly impossible for me to be at home with three kids. One being an infant. Um, and give my students the attention they need and the quality education that they need. And I am a licensed teacher. Um, it becomes very difficult. And then you add the layer of one of my children that needs special attention academically and emotionally and behaviorally. Um, right now, my eldest is being quarantined, um, due to close contact. He was not in the pool testing. Um, moving forward, we will be in the pool testing. Um, and I understand that because it was a community, um, spread, I think is what the right term is. That, that is why, even if he was in the pool test, he would still not be able to be at school. But, um, let's just say hypothetically, he wasn't in pool testing and he was a close contact and it was a school spread. I don't understand what the difference between, um, somebody who was in the pool test and somebody who was not, who was willing to get tested after. And having a negative test. Um, what the difference is. Um, I, I don't, I, I don't know if we have control over that. I think, um, when my son is a close contact and yet the, the other person sitting next to this person who's also a close contact. But is in pool testing, has the right to access their, um, education in, in school by the proper means. I don't, I don't understand why, if I'm willing to then test my child, um, why he isn't, um, he doesn't deserve that same education. Um, and it might be something that's out of our hands, um, that it is, it is the guideline and how it's stated. Um, but if they are guidelines, why can't we kind of make adjustments? Um, and, and have, and have those guidelines benefit us to, you know, our fullest potential. Um, and then just kind of going back to, um, being a teacher. I, I think, um, going remote. Is very challenging. Um, I think every single teacher thinks about the same issue that has been, uh, brought up. What is the quality education, the quality of education that I'm giving these students? I don't think I've ever talked to a teacher that I work with currently that is not worried about the work that they're giving their students. Um, I know that what is being said on, um, new instruction and independent levels. Is very valid. There is no way in my right mind that I am going to teach a child, um, something new and rigorous every single day. And expect them to grow academically. Um, so I just want to speak on, on that behalf. And, and I know, um, lots of us teachers have done professional development around teaching remotely. And it is possible. My concern with that is how often are we going to be asked to do it? Because the more we take the students out, the, the less and less rigor we end up with. We still need the rigor. Um, and I think everybody agrees with that. But the more often that we're taken out, the less opportunity we have for that rigor. Um, and I don't think that anyone wants that. I don't think anyone here is saying this, you know, this is just the way it is. And I think that's why we're having this meeting. Um, and another, another point that I kind of want to, um, make or ask a question is, um. Is, I guess a point is that, um, all of this, because I've, I've been hearing a lot that why aren't we thinking about the kids? All of this is because of the kids. Um, every day I show up to my, my job and I am greeted with smiles and I am greeted with support. And I have some very challenging days. And without that support and without that mental support, I, I wouldn't be able to do my job to the fullest. And I'm grateful that I have those people in my building that are willing to show up every day with a smile on their face. And I just want to remind people that we want the best for our kids. And I say our kids because we look at these students as our own kids and we want them to be successful. So I think that's all I kind of wanted to say in the questions that I had. Um, so I, I, I think at the end of the day, I push, I think I lean more towards, it's a very hard thing. But I think I lean more towards staying in school. I, I don't, I don't believe that being remote is going to give us the results that we want. And then to what end do we do this with Christmas right around the corner? Um, and it's a really hard thing for me to say because I see both points of it. You know, and I'm a parent. And, and then another thing is my, my, my son who, who is struggling, he's in second grade and still can't read, um, a kindergarten level. So I have, I have a kid at home that needs extra support and isn't getting those supports met by remote learning. We can give them the basic education that they need. Um, but those extra supports aren't, aren't there for remote. Um, and I guess those are my concerns. And I just want to say thank you for letting me speak and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the room?
Good morning.
I just want, I'm still going to ask just in case somebody comes up with something.
Can I just ask, say something about the pool testing? Yeah, the topic, I feel like, and I'm happy to, not at this time, but give more information. Um, however, I think Julie and I have sent out numerous things for the grade school especially. Um, but, um, the base, basic, basically, you know, like the PCR every week. So if those kiddos got exposed on Thursday, they are a couple of days in relief. That parents are following, but do not send your kid to school sick because please don't come to school waiting for that result or to get tested. We can do a drive-by and get tested. But the idea is it's a surveillance every week. Um, and that's the difference between going to Walgreens, going to CVS, going to wherever you're going to care and getting a one test and coming back. Every week they're getting tested. Um, and it's free. And testing, like I've said before, that in a community, it's very challenging to get a test, a test right now. If a parent only today could get anyone, any test until Saturday. So I, I just want to make that, and I'm happy to share more of that because I don't think this is about pool testing. But it, it helps keep our kids in school.
I have a question. Um, I guess I struggle with, why is that not good enough if it's a community spread? I, I keep coming back to.
I know Jim has said, mentioned that too. And, and because of that layer of measures, asking strictly layered measures. The masking, the campfire, the kids club, no offense, but they're all homework everywhere outside. Yes, the transmission is lower, but they are unmasked. Here at school, when they can reset outside and it's unmasked, but they are with only their classroom homework.
But if the whole purpose of the pool testing is for surveillance. I guess I, I.
And I, I mean, I agree, I just, I want to clarify, like, I agree that the pool testing is keeping our kids in school. But the problem is, is, I mean, it borders discrimination against students who choose not to pool test. It, they deserve the same right to their education. Just because they don't want to pool test doesn't mean that they can't have a swab the next day to say, oh, you know what? You're, you are negative and it's okay. I, it, it doesn't make any sense. The person who's a close contact.
To the state level, uh, taken to that shortly, it's a state level, not a local decision.
One sec.
Please don't mute me, everybody else got to rebuttal other people.
We didn't.
No, we didn't. I think in a way of following up on this question. If you see a kid, a kid does not look good, does not feel good. Do you send them right home or do you take, give them swab first?
It varies. I mean, there, even if they're swabbed, they go home. Um, so if they're unwell, yeah.
But you do take a test then?
Some, I call a parent, I tackle them, have a conversation with them. Um, if there is, I don't test every student I'm sending home, it's parent choice. And they, some do not want me to test them and that's okay, if we can see kind of approach. But if they're unwell, like, you know, one symptom, two symptoms depending on, they are sent home. And we are seeing a larger number lately, kids are coming to school sick or giving medicine before they come to school.
Well, I'm hearing excuses that people say, well, they shouldn't have done that at the school. I mean, I believe they didn't do it. But the point was is that when they have difficulty getting it somewhere else, then it costs them something somewhere else. I mean, they use every excuse in the neighborhood, except that we don't know whether the kid is positive or not.
Right.
On the flip side of that, it's my understanding that if a child has some kind of a symptom, runny nose or cough or whatever, they get sent home. And they can't come back until they test negative. Is that correct?
It depends on the symptom.
So I, I don't know that.
Yeah, it depends on low, low risk symptom hypothetically, congestion or runny nose, they can be at school. I mean, it's not at our little grade level, you're unmasked, one, one symptom, it's challenging. But my, my verbiage, this is the pregnancy level. If, if they have two low-risk symptoms, headache, fatigue, congestion, or and/or one high risk, which is more throat fever, cough, things like that. The protocol is, um, consult with your doctor because it could be alternative diagnosis of stress. um consult with your doctor because it could be alternative diagnosis of stress relief or something else.
Yeah.
Um or ear infection, um uh attacked. So we know this, I have done a lot of outreach and and doing roadside testing.
Thank you.
Um and um or stay home from school for ten days.
Yeah.
Day zero, they're symptoms onset or the day that they're sent home. So there, I mean, we are kind of getting kids. And I'm testing probably, I feel like at least ten kids a day, whether it's at on the roadside where they're being sent home and offered to test them just because I know I know tests are hard and I want them back at school. As long as that they have a negative test and symptoms are improving, they can be back at school. And that's what we want.
It's just, it just seems so strange that if you have symptoms and you test negatives, you can come to school, but if you don't have symptoms, you're not even allowed to take a test. I I don't know. I just, it's just, it just.
Exposure, that's, are you talking about exposure and non-exposure?
Exposure.
Yeah, so exposure is, you've been exposed to a COVID situation, right? And so you have two to fourteen days to get COVID.
But a pool.
But tech- but technically, the person who's symptomatic, you don't know if they were exposed or not, right?
You assume until proven otherwise.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Jessie and then Julie.
So it's a state mandate, the pool testing, as far as, say, my child was exposed at school. Is that a state mandate if he's not in pool testing, that he has to quarantine for ten days?
Uh huh. Yeah.
So it'd be a little. So I think this is really important information because we, I'm reading the newsletters that are being sent home. But it says, oh, if you do this, I really think you should stress to parents that this isn't a school thing, um not a school rule or whatnot, because I think a lot of parents feel that the school has decided this. And I think it's really important that a lot of parents know that because I was really frustrated whenever this, I'm not taking part in pool testing. Um but I just feel like, I think it would be really important for parents to know that because I think a lot of people are just really frustrated thinking they're being straw armed and difficult testing by the school. I think they should know the difference.
Yeah, and I follow this.
And we're meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, the reality of it, a lot of parents don't. So I just think there's a lot of information because, right? I think there's a lot of information that can go out to parents. A lot of stuff is really big. And as a parent, I guess, and I think a lot of parents are asking for this, is we need more info, not violating HIPAA or anything like that, but we just need more information. Some stuff is really big and kind of, you know, goes around topics. So and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, I'm just saying, I think that's what a lot of parents really want and need. Um so that we're not jumping to conclusions and hopping on social media and everything else. I'm just as guilty of it as anybody else. I know a lot of people are, but when you're not given much information, you're left here with devices.
Yes, and in all actuality, we weren't even looking at pool testing until we realized that it could mitigate quarantine and that's specifically why we voted to do it.
Right. No, I just, I think it would be, I mean, because I'm thinking, what's the difference between Nurse Melissa testing my children for COVID or me going to Walgreens, both are free. Um I just, I don't, if my child tested positive, I would tell everyone, I would have them quarantined. If my child tested negative, I would hope they could go back to school. Um and I just feel like the pool testing is just a level of control from whoever it be that is really unnecessary.
So I think, no, Julie.
Yes, Julie.
I just want everyone to know that Melissa, Nurse Melissa did not make the rule.
Right, and that's one thing that's important to care about.
And I know at grade school, we kept communicating many different things and I was hoping it was clear, but I'm here to make it maybe to be more clear. But Nurse Melissa does not make the rule. Melissa, I don't even know how she manages to come to school every day. She's working sixty plus hours uncertain. She and I work over the weekend. We work here half the day is Sunday. We're on the phone Saturday night. That's not unusual during this time. And I know it's our job and I get that. But I feel like right now, everyone is just questioning Nurse Melissa. And it's not Melissa, it's CDC. And now currently, we haven't been clear enough about that. So I just want to clarify that you're not making any rules if we're holding.
Right, that's what I asked her that because so many people weren't clear on that. So many people are.
Yes, I'll just let me.
Yes.
So I just want that to be clear though. And I'm hearing like in my office, I'm receiving a call too with people you know, unhappy with the decisions that are being made. And I've also had conversations with people and I have to tell you, people have been very polite and respectful when I talk to them. They initial contact was kind of like a high level of attention. But as the conversations forward, people have been very polite, very respectful. So everyone's frustrated, everyone's tired, it's too much for everyone. But I just want you to know we're not making the rule. And I guess I just like the questioning of Melissa's thought. Because she's not making these decisions.
Right. Uh I don't think anybody up at this table thinks Melissa's making any decisions, but Melissa has the most knowledge to clarify things for us to make our decisions.
Right, but I just, I just, I I guess the mama bias coming out.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And that's how I feel. Like I I feel like I have a job to do with my staff. And I I'm very concerned about my staff. Um we are at a breaking point. And I know we have a job to do and I tell, I can, I can tell you without any hesitation, the grade school has a fabulous staff. They work, they're flexible, they're passionate, and we have made every single day work. And it's not, they're not saying they're not willing to make it work. But I I can see us as we're moving forward, that people are going to need time off. They're not going to be able to sustain this. And I know I I hear comments about the health field and I have no idea how anyone in the health field has even, I don't even know. But teachers will need time off. I know they will. I think I just don't, don't see how they're going to continue. You know, every day. And I don't know what that looks like, but I want you to know that your kids come before anything else. And your kids are our kids. And they mean the world to every single staff member in the school. So I don't have a solution, but I want you to know that the teachers are not looking to not have their kids at school. But I I do know moving forward, they they are going to need time off. I mean, there's no way around that. People are going to have that mindset.
And I just want to build on that a little bit. Early in the year, and I need to clarify that the what I mentioned earlier, the CDC completely flipped the script on us this year because we weren't known in the state of emergency anymore. Last year, they determined whether or not we were open or closed. And they, there were a number of times last year that we had to close. They told us, close, close the grade school, close this, but whatever. Uh this year, their goal, as the deal is, is to keep schools open. So they were working hard. I didn't clarify that with the staff and Julie and I talked a couple of weeks ago and she went up the staff app because they were saying to her, right, two things to say related to that. They were saying to her when something came up. We had two two teachers in the same day found out that they were positive and their class was going to have to quarantine. The teachers are asking her, does this mean we're going to have to close? Does this mean we're going to have to close? And there was a sense of relief that she that she shared with me when when she met with them and said, we're not closing. The only way we're not opening is if we can't staff the school. Earlier in the year, we had one of our first, I think it was in October, whatever, we had our one of our first early releases. I went around to all of the grade school teachers in particular because at that point, the the um the biggest issues and they continue to be at the grade school. And I met with each one of their grade levels and to a to a person, they all said to me, we're not going to close this, are you? You're not going to close, they don't want to. At this point, it's sort of the question, it's kind of where the CDC is coming from. Given everything, people have tried with their best effort to to make it happen. We need, we need to consider this next step. And I think honestly, our teachers are not going to say um we should close. They're going to say, we're going to keep doing everything we can. And that's honorable, that's outstanding. Um but I, but I, you know, I don't know that it's wise.
Joel?
I mean, this with all due respect, we've been here for three hours and we haven't even looked at the options. We need to move forward. We've heard both sides of the issue. Um you know, we've all been dealing with this all week. This is our life every day. That's not either side of the fence. That's simply, we need to keep this moving at some point. I I can tell you from my point of view, working with these folks, we just need to know what you want to do. It it's sitting here and dissecting every scenario is not making a decision. We we have to move forward at some point. And look at what we're proposing and make a decision. And I just, I don't, I'm really not trying to be disrespectful, but at some point, after three hours, we're supposed to be making some headway in the office. Uh I just think that at some point, we need to, if you have to look at what the options on the table. We're still discussing, if this happens in the back, let's.
Oh, I mean, that, basically, those are the options.
Yeah, but I mean, have you discussed them and you can put them forward or you can put them.
Well, I, I mean, I I think we have been discussing them.
Right, so.
We've talked a lot about the week after. I know, and I just like to let the community have a chance to be heard.
But as you said, every two weeks, you guys discuss it.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah, I I I honestly don't care which movie you are, I just want to know what's.
Yeah.
Melissa, I just want to note on the um looking at, when I've talked to Samantha about, we are trying to find you guys to be aware, I know she tends to. She's like a frequent caller. Um she 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 looked at the proposal and this reason why she thought to the what's my understanding is what she said the week before Thanksgiving and the week after, we make, you know, makes sense after, after Thanksgiving. The mingling and the increased cases. The week before is, oh, I or Julie don't have to put kids in quarantine during Thanksgiving because we are seeing an increased case. So I'm just putting that out there. I'm not, I'm not saying one way or another. I don't have I'm a parent too, so I know the struggles of working, you know, remotely and what have you, but that's kind of the reason behind that. We did do our pool testing today, hopefully find results tomorrow, and we have our clinic on Friday. So I'm just putting it out there.
Thank you.
Yes, so I'm going to speak on behalf of these folks since you've been waiting since five fifteen.
Uh huh.
Um just, I I hear everybody, but I've been holding them off as long as I could. They go out those next hour.
Hi there. I am a parent to daughters in the middle school. And first I want to say that um I currently have one home quarantining due to close contact. Um actually have both them home because I value mental health of teachers and of myself and my children. And if I separate my twin daughters, it will not be pretty on either end. Um second, I want to say that they have received wonderful instruction from their teachers. Um I had to help one of my daughters with math today. And the teacher had done a video and it was the best thing ever because I could actually help her with her math. Um three weeks ago, I kept both my children home because they had a cold and I knew that their symptoms mirrored COVID and that it was just best to keep them home and do the remote learning. Um I personally am very blessed that I'm able to work from home. I have a husband that is disabled. Um and my kids do fine whether they are in school or remote learning. I personally am considering keeping my kids home for an additional week because I am due to have surgery um day before Thanksgiving and I don't want to have to quarantine them again and have to postpone my surgery. I am one hundred percent for giving the teachers a break of having to plan two classrooms, two two amounts of classwork for, you know, in student and remote, that has to be extremely difficult. Um I know that I try to do my job and help my children with their schoolwork and it makes for a long day. Um I believe that going remote for two to three weeks, give it a chance. It's something that you haven't done yet. Um I would support going remote till summer, just like one of the other parents that was in there. Um but that's just me. I'm blessed that I'm able to work from home and I'm able to do that and that my kids can learn in the classroom or remotely. And I understand there's a lot of controversy around this. But ultimately, I think it is the board's decision and you have to do what is best for the students and the teachers regarding whether they're getting a quality education, but you also have to take into consideration everybody's mental health. And it has been a long two and a half years um dealing with this pandemic. And I think that our teachers deserve to have a moment where they can only do one set of classwork, only one set of lesson plans. Um that's just my opinion and I know we all have them and it's been a long night and you guys. Unfortunately, the school committee, nobody is going to be happy with you, no matter which decision you make. You're going to have half the parents mad at you and half the parents are going to love you for whichever decision you do. But ultimately, the decision is up to you. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything new?
I'm not sure about the two before, but there was a question requesting the total number of student positive cases for SY twenty-two, school year twenty-two. And explain why you don't update parents with the case count each week as many districts do. The total number of staff positive cases for school year twenty-two. The percentage of students and staff in the districts were signed up for pool testing. And if somebody could please explain the following, how are we tracking whether through remote learning model needs to be changed? The district's plan for required vaccination for staff, given its effect on staff attendance and the fact that here's with more than one hundred employees, including schools. And the other question, will the question that comments in the chat be captured and responded to?
Do you know how to do that?
I can capture, yes.
Yes.
We'll try our best to have that.
I'm not even sure where to go with that. I will tell you that the um we have until January.
Did you hear me talking? Did that make sense?
Is that, is that Erin? Erin, is that you again? Nope, okay.
Um. Oh, that was not, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Just um the regarding the president's um I'm losing. Mandate, yeah, regarding um vaccination or weekly testing. Um we essentially, unless it gets challenged in courts, if it goes through all, we're making your name. That will be rolled out on January fourth. That's the the timeline right now. Uh some of those other questions I'd have to see. I can't remember them off the top of my head.
Some of them you'll need to do some research on. Some of them we have discussed at previous meetings.
And some I, some of the information about numbers I gave out earlier.
Yeah.
Um you know, there was a suggestion made earlier. Uh I I think it's sort of an interesting, it's a catch twenty-two. A great suggestion is about having somebody do, basically somebody specifically responsible for public relations. Uh you know, I I'm, I guess, I I I'm involved in other systems because both my wife's a teacher and whatever, and I've been up for a long time. You know, I I I feel like we put out a ton of information um to our parents and it's available primarily on the websites and things. Um but communication is one of those things, it's a never-ending battle that you you never win. Um you can hopefully do, you know, the best you can. And and we've tried to do that. I feel like I spent a lot of time writing and providing information and answering questions and whatever um to the staff, to the community, uh to the parents individually. I respond to them as a group, I respond to them individually. Um you know, it's, I it's, I have a hard time swallowing the notion that we are not providing information. I feel like we've been, and and that's just me. I mean, I I know how much the the grade schools and the teachers and people are putting out for information. Uh there's a lot out there. There still needs to be more. I will always say that.
And I'm not criticizing anyone when I say that. I'm just speaking on behalf of other parents that there's a lot of things that we question. It would be wonderful if there were some sort of question and answer forum that parents could shoot off a question and it would be answered for other people to see.
And I, and and I would love to do that. And I've said to people, I'm more than happy to spend whatever time. I'm happy to, I understand Joel's point. Um but I've sat in other meetings in this community since I've been the superintendent that have lasted much longer. We need to go longer. I'm happy to do that. But I, what I really need is um, and I think you need it for me too, is 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 a a a sense of understanding of the complexity and difficulty of this of this process that there are no right answers. I don't know who said, you know, earlier, Kelly said it. There's um. people want to make the school committee or me out to be the bad guy and whatever the case may be, and the teachers are being wimpy or what, I mean, that's just wrong, that's wrong, that's hurtful, it's mean, and it's wrong. I've done this job for 38 years because I want time off or whatever the case may be. I, I said at the beginning to hold people up the three-legged stool because that's what my commitment has been for all the time I've done it. For however long I do it, you know, moving forward. And I, and I would say that's just speaking for me because I could do that. But I've been so impressed with both the community and our teachers. You know, Jolene talked about her staff and she's absolutely right. Wait, the grade school staff is amazing. Overall, this teaching staff is amazing. It's why I want to be here. The community overall has been amazing. And I've been in 11 different school systems. And I know what it's like to be in a place and I listen to my colleagues. You know, we're blessed, we're blessed in a lot of ways. But it doesn't make this decision easy or there's no black and white. As I keep saying, there's no silver bullets.
I had something really quick to add. Is that all right?
Very quickly.
Okay, I agree. I 100% agree the teachers are amazing. And that is a big part of why parents really don't want to do them at these. I cannot teach my child or supervise him or manage his learning as well as a teacher does. If I could or if I thought I could do it better, I'd be homeschooling. And I think that's kind of, I mean, honestly, one of the biggest points.
I agree.
I can bring my kids to work for me. I'm flexible. Most people aren't, but there's a lot of things like that. And if you're not going to get that same level of education, I don't know, because there's a lot of kids that are going to suffer because of it.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thanks for taking the time. I understand everybody wants to get out of here. And this has been a long meeting, but there's still 140 of us watching on Zoom and everybody that was compelled enough to be there and speak in person. I would have loved to, but timing didn't work out. So here I am. I want to preface my comments by saying I completely and 100% agree with everything that's been said in regard to how amazing the staff there is. None of what I'm about to say is meant to belittle, demean, or criticize any one individual. What I, what I find so frustrating and feel that I cannot just hold my breath and stay silent anymore is the fact of the matter that we, like many other parents in this meeting, have been time after time subject to these quarantines that have been imposed on us by the school. And I know some of the words that I use like this being imposed might cause some people to be defensive. But I'm speaking from facts and that's exactly what this is. Things are being imposed on us. If I was able to go on to the CDC website and find all of the published guidance and come to the determination that on three different levels, I was given misguided information. And I'm not the professional here. I'm not on the committee. I'm not a principal. I'm not a a employee of the CDC, but I was able to interpret this common sense language and realize that what I've been told is incorrect. Then it is our job as community members to hold the committee accountable for using the proper interpretation of these guidelines. They are exactly that. They are guidelines. They are not mandates. They are not laws. They are meant to help the students in the community, not hurt them. It is very, very clear to just about everybody that we are not seeing that the kids' club is being allowed to be considered a school-related event. I understand the considerations that are being made that maybe kids' club is not following all of the protocols to the T that the school is right now. But I, from what I understand, they are masking indoors as required. And the only thing that I've heard that differs maybe is something about the cohorts and controlling the children's movements and interactions. Is there anything else that I'm missing that, that the school club or the kids' club is not doing that the school is? What concessions need to be made or what changes need to be made to the kids' club in order to allow us to consider that a school-related activity? So we can do the right thing for the children and use the guidance and the pool testing and the way that it was intended to reduce the negative impacts of quarantines on our children.
I think we discussed that earlier. It's basically a commitment to follow the same protocols that we're doing at school, which Ronnie has totally agreed to do.
I think the concern is, at the beginning of the school year, we as a committee made the conscious tough decision to follow CDC regulations. Do we then pick and choose which of them we're going to follow?
We absolutely do. We absolutely do. There's, there's no, it's a, it's a guy. I don't understand why it's all or nothing. Why are we, US is, school committee members are there to make decisions at a local level that, that makes sense. The CDC has already said they don't have the time to investigate on a case-by-case basis which, which programs may qualify. You do, you're, you're right there. You know that these children are not being exposed to anybody outside of the school system. They don't even leave the premise. So to throw your hands up and say, well, it's the CDC guidelines and there's nothing that we can do. We either follow them or we don't. It's, it's not an acceptable answer.
I don't think that's what we've been doing. That's why we're having this discussion tonight. And we, from the very beginning, we made our own guidelines, basically. And most of them were in conjunction with the CDC and it was pretty much all to mitigate quarantine. That has been our focus from the beginning. And so now,
And I don't.
Wait, let me finish, please. So now we're having that discussion. I think we're pretty much in agreement that we think it should be under the same guidelines as school. And that's why at that, at that meeting on August 18th, we said we would look at this on a regular basis. Just for that reason, because I'm, I'm not willing to just not think about everything. From every, for every two weeks is what we've been doing.
And I thank you very much for that. And unfortunately, I'm hearing mixed messages. I'm hearing exactly what you're saying, which follows logic and common sense 100%, but I'm also hearing that we have to, we have to just follow the CDC guidance or we can't pick and choose.
I suspect, I can't say this 100%, but I suspect that a vast number of the people who are either here in the room or on Zoom do not follow our, our meetings bi-weekly. If they did, they would probably understand that one of the things that is unique about this particular committee makeup is that we do a lot of, for lack of a better term, devil's advocating. We try really hard to look at both aspects. And so we ask those kinds of questions. Well, do we follow everything that the CDC says or do we pick and choose what we decide we want to follow? At no time tonight have we made a concrete decision. We have made no votes. We have really been just discussing and listening and absorbing everything that everybody has to say. We are really hard, consciously work really hard on making sure that we're talking out everything before we make a decision so that we're not assuming where somebody on the committee comes from. That we know where they're coming from and so that we can decide if maybe we misunderstood something or maybe we didn't think something through the way that somebody else did. So I just want to make sure that everybody who is listening, either in person here, which there is a significant number compared to a normal meeting, or listening on Zoom, which again, there's a significant number compared to a normal meeting. We haven't made any votes. We haven't made any decisions. We have just discussed topics at this point.
One last person.
Yes.
So my, I guess, comment, I did hear my name, right?
Yes.
So mine is a little different. My comment, it's, it's kind of going in a different direction. So if, if we're having a hard time with not being able to find a balance for teachers and parents and everything, is there a way? I don't know if this is possible. So is there a way for teachers to be compensated for the extra hours and, and work that they're doing? I know it doesn't fix the problem of them needing a break or, you know, me needing a break. But it, it could help things a little bit and it might be a different discussion for a different day, for a different meeting.
We did do that last year.
Erin was. Erin, Erin's here this year.
Oh, okay. We did do that last year for our teachers. And it is always something we could discuss again. That's it? Okay, okay.
So.
Is that a hand or is that not a hand?
I just, for the kids' club, I just want to reiterate if it's school sponsor, it's in the winter preschool building. So it will affect any contact tracing and all of that that will fall on myself and Jamie because we have high school staff members that work there, which it already has, as Lonnie and I have had many conversations in the last week. And I love Ronnie. Ronnie and I talk at, get a talk at night and chat and I thank him for all that he does. And Jeff too, we get emails and all of that. So I don't want you to think I'm not against, I'm not against it when I'm getting that. But it's school sponsor. So to answer the question about what differs from school versus outside of school, again, cohorting, assigned seating, anything, anyone six feet, within six feet times 15 minutes. So they would have to be making sure, tracking the high school staff members and then please, we'd be having to track that. So when we do have a positive, you know, I would, you know, consult with them and help do the contact tracing. If they are pool testers, again, that's the biggest thing right now. Right? Their school testing, they still have to quarantine outside in the communities. I don't think people understand that, that they have been in close contact with a positive or positives. At Kids Club, there are multiple positives. So there are kids in quarantine right now that have been exposed at least three plus times plus on different dates potentially. So I just want to make it clear that if we do adopt it being school sponsored, it will have to be tracked very, you know, very accurately. And because that's what Jolene and I spend hours on doing with close contacts on the bus, in cafeteria, in the classroom. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. I have two kids' club questions. Okay. So actually, the first is for you. Do you have any idea of how many of the close contacts for kids' club would have been exempted from?
Eight, nine.
Nine out of, nine would have been exempted?
Thirty. How many would have been? Twenty-eight.
Nine out of 28 would have been exempted from quarantine because of pool testing?
Well, they could have been out of quarantine outside, but they could have come back to school. And those nine, just want to make it clear to have been exposed at least three different times. And they are in all different, it's in all different classrooms throughout the whole school and seven, seven of them.
Nine, nine would have been.
Nine that would have had the opportunity of that school. Had it not been, you and I.
Okay.
No, there would have been none. There were nine.
No, no, but seven classes.
Yeah, that's what I said to finish saying. There were nine students, but they were brought seven different classes.
Okay. And then my next question is for you, Lonnie and Jeff. I don't have a student in kids' club. I've never physically been there to see what happens. Is it a sit-down study type situation or is it more of an open gym type situation or somewhere in the middle?
Play outside for the first hour to 45 minutes. They could sit at snack and then reading a homework time. And then a little more open gym kind of thing at the end or the end of the weather, it's nice to go back outside to play and go take a nap.
And how long could a child potentially be at kids' club from when?
Between our closest school, five thirty.
Five thirty, okay.
Two and a half hour.
Okay.
So let me just add, I think it's important goes with your questioning. Ronnie and Sue and I met on Saturday. And we talked about this type of thing. And my sense of where I was coming from with respect to supporting that was, again, some of the history I've already talked about, so I won't reiterate that. But that, I think Ronnie really felt that this kids' club were essentially following the guidelines for the school. I think as we sort of dug into a little deeper, we weren't quite as confident with that. But I, but I don't want to speak for you, Lonnie, or for you, Jeff, but I think there's sort of a.
That right there, just, I just wrote it down for homeworks and the assigned seating.
Yeah. So that's what I'm, we're just saying is, that's, that's kind of what we're saying is we, and what Ronnie and I, and Sue and I talked on a Saturday is that if we were to go, if the board were to adopt this direction, then there would be an expectation that all of the, the expectations from school would be part of kids' club. And I just want to reiterate that we're not looking to take over our program.
You might not know this off the top of your head, and maybe you do. Do you have a sense of if you, if we do school sponsor this and you do start cohorting, are there instances where there would be a single student cohorted by themselves, separated from every other student?
But that only means more than six feet distance, doesn't it? It doesn't mean they have to be in another room.
Right. And you're in the gym, right? You're not in the cafeteria?
Okay. But the other concern with that is the outside. Because we cohort for recess too. So I have four classrooms that go out at the same time, but they have four different designated spots. And the kids can't cross the cohorts. So I don't know how they do possibly do that if you're expecting them to follow everything that we do. I don't even know where all that would be. Like, and the how you possibly do that outside, but I'm just putting it out there. Maybe it is possible. But we don't have recess time as separate. We have four separate areas.
One of the things, again, if, if it's the desire of the school committee to go in that direction, I think there are, and I don't want to brainstorm solutions. I mean, I can think of a fairly.
But you probably should be careful about what you, what you say has to be the requirement. Because you said that you would have to meet all school expectations.
Yep.
So you'd have to be careful about how you state something.
What looks like an implementation, right?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. First, I wanted to talk about, just because we're on the topic of kids' club, I think that we should be doing everything that we can to assist making that part of the, under the school's umbrella because we clearly have, you know, childcare issues right now. And if that's a solution that we can create for, you know, work with Lonnie to get him and all of those employees and, and students under guidelines, like I feel like we can get, get a lot of kids back in school under the condition that, you know, a lot of these kids are still not pool testing. And I, I feel like we're, we keep talking about the CDC says we have to, we have to do something different. Things aren't working. But as a community, as parents in this community with our children, we have not taken full advantage of this tool that we have. We have, I think, very low enrollment in pool testing in the elementary school. And I know have, parents have a variety of concerns as to why they don't want to be using it. But people need to know that they can look up information on this on the CDC website and get all of the information about it. It's not invasive for these kids. I've been working with them personally. They think sometimes it is pretty hilarious that we're out collecting boogers every morning. And the overall goal again is that this is a tool that we use to help mitigate COVID. It's, it's a public health tool to slow the spread. We're going to catch asymptomatic children before they're, they're, have a high viral load in their classroom, spreading it to teachers and students who are not vaccinated. And what I would ask people in our community tonight is really take a look at that information that's online and consider enrolling your kids in this because this is going to keep them in school, which is what every single person here wants. And it's also going to slow the spread of the virus, which is going to keep teachers in school too, meaning they don't have to create two assignments for kids at home in quarantine and kids at school. That's all I've got. Thank you.
And for community members who are here or listening and you're understanding it better, I'm just going back to what you said, Jesse. If you could help spread that word amongst parents, they might take that from you better than from us. If you could help spread that word amongst parents, they might take that from you better than from us. So if you could work with us on that and get that message out, I think that's such a great point. That would be great. Yes, we're going to take one last thing and then we're going to be done with the taking of the comments.
Hi, sorry, thanks, thanks for taking me back. I I just wanted to address one more thing that specifically related to an experience that we had. And that has to do with the school's protocol for when children are deemed to close contact during school hours. So a couple of occasions, we've been contacted while we're at work and told that we need to come pick up the children immediately, that they are not allowed to use bus transportation. And on both occasions, I've asked to speak to Nurse Melissa or or Jolene to discuss the situation and and kind of get a little bit more information. And I've been repeatedly told that I cannot speak to them, they're too busy. And so I call and leave a voicemail and and finally get a call back and we have a conversation. And in this particular instance, again, we were told we had to come pick up our children immediately. They were being quarantined without being tested and that they would not be allowed to ride the bus. And somebody had to had to come and pick them up. Again, as a layperson, I went on to the CDC's website and determined that it says clearly in the guidance that any child that's deemed deemed to be a close contact during school hours is allowed to finish out their school day. And it is acceptable for them to ride the bus. So as school administrative staff, as the school committee, I just questioned why I was able to find that guidance and determine that we're we're not following the protocol. And and will that be addressed or am I, if I'm missing something, then I apologize and I would love to be enlightened.
I just have a really quick question. Are you going on the main CDC website or the federal CDC website?
The main, main CDC. I I pulled all references, I sent those to Jim as well as many other people. I cited my references and provided screenshots and highlighted and underlined all the applicable verbiage.
Okay. So we're going to end that, the public comment section, section of this.
Can that be addressed?
It will be. I I don't have an answer for you. Tell you that in the heat of, I mean, could something have been missed? Probably. It's likely, but it but it's, A, wasn't both intentional and I don't think in the moment that anybody was going to stop and and dig into the, the, you know, the, all the verbiage. I mean, you just sent me a lot of information. I certainly am happy to to review that with the outbreak team and make sure that, you know, that. My understanding was that the pool tester, which I believe your children were branded.
Yes, they are.
That they could, they they should have been permitted, but, you know, should have been. And, you know, what the decision was made in that moment, you know, we we will address it.
Yeah, and and I'm not saying that it was done with any malintent. I I don't blame anybody, I'm not mad at anybody in particular. I'm just saying that it's concerning for me as a community member to be able to find this information pretty quickly and easily. And and I'm not a school staff member, I'm not a member of the CDC. And and to see that we're, we're really harping on following the CDC guidelines to a T, but then to see that those guidelines are are not being followed as they're written. And that, you have to understand, that has a direct impact to many, many families. So that's, and I know everybody's under a lot of stress and and nobody's happy. But to to just say, whoops, we missed it. And and that's besides the fact that my children were then put into a room with somebody that was symptomatic. And and that's a whole nother issue and I don't really have the, all the information on that. And I won't go too deep into that, but that's very, very troubling for me.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Any members, do you want to take any kind of action?
Well, I want to talk about, I want to go back to the Kids Club for a second.
Yeah.
I don't feel like having the Kids Club be a school sponsored activity starting very soon is a really great idea. I think that it sounds like there are some situations that need to be changed or rectified before that possibly happens. And expecting that to happen and change immediately is not really realistic. My thought would be that we revisit that after Lonnie and Jeff have a beat to figure out what that would really look like for the kids. And then talk with them and determine if we make that decision. My suggestion would be that we not do that today.
That's a great suggestion, I think, because I want to put you guys, I guess I don't mind putting you on the spot. The Kids Club is closed until when?
Next Monday. Next Monday.
Next Monday.
It's closed this week, we're closed all week.
So the fifth, so we meet again on the seventeenth. I was going to suggest that we consider that, we we take some time and meet with Lonnie and Jeff, if you're, you know, if you're available to to revisit all those guidelines. And then ask the committee to put on next Wednesday's agenda?
Yeah, sure. I think ultimately it would be great to be able to consider the Kids Club a school sponsored activity as far as quarantining mitigation is concerned. But I don't know that that's realistic right now, I think it's just setting us up for failure.
Well, and, you know, if we, if we take action on it on Wednesday, that would, they're not open anyway, so.
They are, it will be.
Well, right, but they're not open this week. So if we made a decision tonight, it wouldn't affect anybody for several days anyway.
I just think it'd be good to give them a chance to digest what we're asking of them and to determine how feasible that really even could be. Right, because the biggest issue seems to be outside play. It's easy enough to cohort the kids sitting static in the gym. How do you cohort them outside? That's the plan that they're going to have to really develop and and decide how to deal with. Especially in a situation where there is at least one kid who quarants alone, if not multiple single cohorting people. Yep, okay. And any objections to that? Joe?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, so we will put it on the agenda for the seventeenth, please, to revisit, to revisit.
Do you want that in formal motion?
No.
Okay.
That'd be a negative motion, only affirmative motions. Come on, Joe, you know the rules.
So, I just want to make sure.
As far as.
I need to, I just, for getting it on the recording, I know, I I don't want to keep dragging up. But I need to read you the email from Emily Pollan, who's the, the top person to go to at the state, at the DOE. So Jim, I've been following the email exchange, which historically started. I want to share that I, you understand where these community programs sit. Although we hope that the YMCA and other Kids Clubs providing a safe environment, mitigation measures in place, this does not mean that they would fall into a school category as far as COVID nineteen positive case response. That is, the quarantine exceptions listed for schools only applies to schools and school activities. We, it talks about the caseworkers, so let's say that. If you understood a lot that was saying you could count Kids Club as a school activity if you were enforcing the same mitigation measures, I believe that you misunderstood her. Issue, this issue has come up multiple, in multiple school districts, and the answer is the same. They're community programs, not schools. That's from Emily Pollan. And if anybody hears me advocating one way or another, because I read that email, then you, you're only hearing what you want to hear. I'm doing my job, sharing information.
So as far as any action in, with regard to having a remote week or any of these options, I should say, having the age, options one to four. Are there people thinking about any of that?
I could tell you that trying to be consistent, in the sense that since the beginning, I've said that I still think that the students in school is the safest place. Also been worried about the remote program, not because of anything that is happening that is bad. The chips are great, but I don't think we've given them the resources and the development. And it could be anything from video access to lesson plan access. I I got really worried in the sense that, I was a new teacher at one time, and I always say this as a reference. And actually, I went into the school system and did not have a lesson plan anywhere and nobody left me anywhere. Well, that was winter, if I change that. Now, the point is, is that I expect that we would have booed on from X's status so that nobody would say that they were given X number of classes, that they weren't given some type of a book that gave them a lesson plan that they could take and use, okay, at least to begin with. So I think that's happening with remote, we're just saying, teach remote. I don't think we've done enough. I know some people are taking courses, I know they do online and that type of thing, but I think there's a difference. So the only one of these four options that I would think of is number two. Changing November twenty-second and twenty-third to no school days, add that to the end of the school year. And that's where I stand.
Could you just say, you? Kelly and Timothy, what do you feel about it?
I don't know that adding an additional week of remote before or after Thanksgiving week is going to make any significant change. As we've heard meetings before this and meetings today, the majority of our spread is from the community. We are not in control in any way of how our families choose to react and interact with other people in the community, how they choose to mask or not mask when they're at stores regardless of their vaccination status. Add into that the fact that there is a holiday that traditionally has a significant amount of travel and bringing in other people. I don't know that taking that extra week as as remote is really going to do as much as we would hope that it would. I am torn between doing nothing and two. And by doing nothing, it means not making any changes to what we've already done. I think a lot of people read that, thought, great, they're just throwing up their hands and they're not going to do anything. But that really is the state of course.
Right.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so you're either one or two. Timothy?
I think that on a tough stretch, the next few weeks, I'm hoping the vaccination is going to make a difference. That's going to cope with the quarantining. Some of these kids are going to be sent home left and right, really crossing the fingers on that one. It seems like it's that age group that keeps getting hit. So we kind of see, you know, I think what we've got, three, six, nine weeks till it's fully, they're fully done, right? Nine weeks, so we'll kind of see what percentage of our kids are going to be vaccinated. That piece, I too, I believe, kind of the same thing, I don't think it's going to change anything with the numbers. Close Miss School is not going to do anything, so I would get teachers' help. I don't know. I I think, I definitely, I think too, I think just a week off, I think it's just a reset. I think it's might be beneficial for them. And I thought on number five, I thought we were going to talk about that next week.
We did, we said one to four.
Yeah, one to four.
So number five on here, I think, so everyone knows that we discussed, we have made a decision on Wednesday early releases.
That wasn't really in the scope of this meeting.
So that's something we're making a decision on. I I I guess I'm for not closing the school right now.
And I just have, really quickly, we need to make a very strong, and please, if you're listening, either in person or online, please hear this. We have not advocated for a half day on Wednesday. We have advocated for a short early release. We are not advocating to have your students at school until eleven o'clock in the morning and then out of here. So please keep that in mind, please share that with anybody that you talk to. When we have that discussion at our next meeting, it will not be a discussion of a half day or not a half day. It will be the discussion of an early release or not an early release. Significantly less time at home than a half day we need. But please just keep that in mind.
Yeah, please tune into the discussion.
It's great to have this much community involvement, this is not normal at all.
So I I agree with you all. I I don't, I don't really see where a remote days, remote media is going to change the transmission of COVID or make us all of a sudden not have to come back and immediately quarantine again. As far as November twenty-second and twenty-third, go number two. I proposed it earlier and I know some of the parents didn't love it, but could we kind of make a compromise and have that be independent days? So it's not, not a school day for the kids, but yet the teachers wouldn't have to be teaching that day.
And we don't have to have the day.
Right, where, so the teachers could, as far as I'm concerned, they could give the assignment on Friday. The kids would independently learn for those two days. And then the teachers would have the full week with no students.
Would the expectation, if we did that, be that the students would have a check in in the morning on Monday and Tuesday? Or would the expectation be that the, the assignment would be given on Friday and we'll see when we? I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
Especially because we're dealing with kids from four to eighteen. I don't know, what do the teachers think?
I think the expectation has been, I'm not one of the people, but that they, even on those days in the past, they touch base with their kids in the morning, just make sure they're all set. And fifteen minutes, like, almost like a warning meeting type of situation for the grade school. And then they're off to do their work. I don't know what it looked like at the middle school, high school, it probably doesn't mean a school, not really.
I can speak better to the high school, just because I have their last year, but I know we did check ins, we had office hours essentially, so if a kid had a question, they could come and talk to us. I made myself available as needed, so if a kid needed to check in, they could check in. But generally speaking, that lesson was posted with any term they needed, videos they needed, what have you, to be able to get themselves through whatever it may be. And I know that was pretty similar across the board. I have very little experience with middle school, just raised this hyper student there.
What do you think, Jolene, is, would that be beneficial to your staff? Or is it like, hmm, it's just six to one, half dozen, one another?
So I have to apologize, I didn't get here because your voice is speaking.
Oh, sorry. Exhaustion will do that.
And so I, I honestly, I didn't hear all of what Kelly said.
I'll ask again. So my question was, would the expectation, if we had Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week as independent learning days, would the expectation be that the teachers would give the assignment on Friday and we'll see you after Thanksgiving? Or would the expectation be the assignments would be given and then a check in on Mondays, Tuesday morning? So then Sue's question is, what do you think would be most beneficial to the staff? Would, would a quick check in in the morning work well for them on Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week?
So a question for you, does it, does it mean the staff has to come to school?
So that, that's a great question, I was thinking next to.
Yeah.
My answer would be yes. I, it's, it's hard for me to to envision that they, they talk about it's need for time and then not take advantage of that. Maybe we say if you want to, if you want to split it down the middle, they come Maybe we say if you want to, if you want to split it down the middle, they come in on Monday and not Tuesday. I mean, that, maybe that's reasonable. I don't know, just keep hearing this pride for time for time for time. And, and so if we just said two days, you just don't have to be here, that's, that feels a lot different. I think if they have to be here on one or the other, that seems like a reasonable problem.
So why I ask that is because if they were going to be expected to be here as well, that's no different than how we originally started. Because that was the plan. So I was wondering why I was being asked that. If that was the plan, where it was that kids would learn remotely and teachers would be here if we had breaks, or we would do our check-ins.
I was under the impression that originally it would be that there would be, like, a remote day would be instruction by the teacher, like we had the other day, where, so you would, kids would have to show up for the class time.
But that would mitigate that.
And I just, I think the grade school, it doesn't look any different. I think you do essentially morning meetings. Where it looks different is that the middle school and the high school, high school staff has done that they've, that they've always done that. They, they sort of meet for a little bit at the beginning of each of their periods, they meet at the regular time, and they, they have sort of a check-in every period. And I'm not sure, that's what I'm saying, is that Monday, yes, Tuesday, no. That's what I would suggest.
I will say, Mike, feedback from a lot of teachers, not all teachers, like, I don't want to speak for all teachers, has said that they're going to be in the building, they want to be able to check in with their kids. Uh, I think we've already lost a lot of intentional time, and so a lot of people are concerned about that. That's not to say they don't feel like they need a break, but they just feel like that time might be best spent at least checking in with them, even if it's possible.
I was just trying to think of a way where, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to add anything to the end of the school year, but we give the teachers the most time to focus on the planning. If not, having to plan and stop and have class, and plan and stop and have class. But I, I'm not a teacher, so I'm, I'm not sure what, like, I would.
What about the snow day packets? I mean, if you're saying that the teachers want a couple days off to recharge? I mean, we did the snow day packets, why can't they, or something like that?
That's exactly what I'm talking about, and that way that, like, the teachers wouldn't have to stop what they're trying to get done and keep checking in. But that's kind of where I'm.
So the question was, was really geared more toward the elementary kids, right? Because they are the least able to self-direct out of the preschools. So, would we say, "Here's your school, your snow day or your Thanksgiving week packet, go do it. We'll see you after Thanksgiving," or would we say, "Here's your packet, we'll see you on Monday or Tuesday"? Just trying to figure out how do we balance that, because.
I want to give the teachers the most effective time to use those days to play.
Just give a teacher option.
And to get caught up.
And just teacher, I mean, if they want to check in for fifteen minutes, they want to do thirty minute lesson, fifteen, whatever.
Okay, but there wouldn't be the expectation as we have.
So, uh, as your special ed director, I'm kind of an anomaly, and we have a small population of students that are identified for special ed. This option of having teachers give work or checking in if they want to or if they can really impact your special ed team who is already stretched thin. Our teachers are going to have to be online all day because they have separate groups of students. And while they may not be able to provide their full service time, we are obligated by law to provide those services in those modules that they school them.
Okay, that's good. That's why I asked the question.
We also have several students in our district that cannot access remote instruction or remote learning for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
And so, case by case, we would have to hold it up students. But your special ed population would be significantly impacted if it does not give our special ed team a break.
Okay, that's really good to know. Thank you.
Real quick question about what you just said. Would those barriers be mitigated by a hotspot, or are they sometimes psychological barriers?
For kids that cannot, they're not for home. They cannot.
Thank you.
So it sounds like.
About time.
You would go with option two, change those to no school days and add them to the end of the school year.
So, let me just throw this in there. It's entirely possible. This is based on my conversation with the Penn State College superintendent that we meet with every Thursday, that we could get towards the end of the year, and the commission might just say, "Don't make a lot." I don't particularly love that option because, well, actually, I kind of do. If everybody else is doing it, we're, we're one seventy-three instead of one seventy-five.
Would we still ask parents to provide meals? Even if we don't.
Oh, no, 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 we don't have to.
Right. But would we still offer them for families who have no other access to food in their lives, rely on school to get that?
Yeah. Okay.
So, um, just so you all know, I did talk to Gina too earlier, we can't beat what she does, but she did give me her input. She said. Let me find it. She, her, her thought is to stay in school, but would be supportive of those, number two. So that's where Jan is at.
So for people who are not aware, we've already previously decided that children will not be physically in the building on that Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. Right. So now the decision is, do we expect students to be actively learning and teachers to be actively providing that? Or do we expect to count those as zero educational activity days?
They will not count towards one seventy-five.
They would be basically considered vacation days for the kids, right?
Essentially.
But it would give the staff two full days to.
But you don't think it helps?
Take a breath.
It takes, it does that, but it doesn't help the ploy it is. It's drowning, it works behind. It does give the opportunity to get caught up. That's not a concern.
I think, I like this. I think it's a less stress. I mean, it's not what I would have chosen, but it seems like it's a less stress. Um, I, I see, I'm going to guess that people will, will probably sleep in to the extent that they can, and then they will come in and do some work. I think it's, when it's their choice, it feels a lot better than we tell them, if we tell them they have to be there.
So, kind of thinking about that, is it possible to say it's a no student day, but it's a teacher workshop type?
We were.
I don't know how that works.
We can't contractually do that. You should know that, no.
Well, I mean, I didn't know if we could trade.
Yeah, I wouldn't, that would not be my recommendation. Honestly, it's like, I mean, if you're in here during the summer, I mean, people in here all the time, it's like the same thing. People who want the time and need the time would benefit from the time, will take the time.
I guess I just assumed that it would, that the point was for them to be, to getting caught up.
Well, that's sort of the, that's what Tim's saying, and that's the catch twenty-two, so.
And then we can't, can't provide persons that.
We can, but that doesn't provide them any relief.
Well, we should, yeah, that's, that's, sorry, staff, don't.
I'm saying, you know, we can't, we can't hear you again. Their voices. I know you're sorry, and I can't, I can't hear you. I don't know if others can not hear you. Thank you for letting us know. So I, I said, what I said was, I, I guess I thought the whole point of the Monday and Tuesday was for the teachers or the staff to have that time to get caught up in plan and all, and all the stuff that they're not having the time to do. But you're saying if we say it's a no school day, we, that would change?
Well, that's what I was asking.
The requirement, the requirement of them to be here. I guess, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for them, and I don't want to set them up either. We said it's a no school day, then it's a no school day, and there may be some people who just won't come in at all either day. But I, I guess, or we're betting a lot of money, I would say that the, a good percentage of our people are going to be here. And at least on one of those two days, I'm not saying it's going to be moneyier to, but they will be in here because they're, they want the time, and they will appreciate the time.
And is there any expectation, I mean, the teachers do work whether they're in the building or at home, so they're, they're going to do their work wherever they are, so that's.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Some may choose to work all from home. I know a lot of our, our teachers have said, and certainly, Jolene and Megan, they could say, there are a lot of people who, if they're going to do schoolwork, I mean, the people in the faraway, they're probably going to, they're probably going to work from home. People who are nearby, like, for this. You travel a long ways to work, right? So, um, we have a lot of people, like I said, you can be there during the summer, and they don't have to be here, they're here.
Okay, I'm ready.
Already wrote that Joe moved this, but he doesn't.
Joe has not moved this.
No.
No, you didn't.
No.
I'd like to make the motion, I read it off number two.
I second that motion.
We've just seconded, did it anywhere discussion? Any, any other discussion?
No.
We'll take a vote. Okay, all those in favor? Who passes four to zero and five, five, five to zero, proxy. I know.
It'll be unanimous.
Okay. Without any objection from anybody, I can adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-three.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
This meeting, sorry.
Yes, bye, see you Monday.
What was passed? We don't know what was passed.
Yeah, can you clarify? Because I'm not sure.
Okay, yes, we can. Like, hang on, I'm going to read it to you. I just got to get my paper.
Okay.
Oh, I got it. Thank you. So, the only thing that we have voted on, nobody thinks that we should have a remote week. So that, that's not going to happen. The kids are going to stay in school for the second week after Thanksgiving, or the week before and the week after, right? So the only thing that we've, that we voted on was to change November twenty-second and twenty-third to a no school day.
Those of you in the room, could you please be quiet so that the remote people can hear?
So the, the children, so basically how this affects the children is, instead of having to have November twenty-second and twenty-third be remote days, they are going to be a no school day.
No school days and no stories for anybody. Teachers want to come in and do planning and prep work. They are welcome to do that, but they are not required.
And just to keep you all know, I'm going to.
And those days are added to the end of the school year?
Yes.
Yes.
And the week after will be in school.
In school.
Okay, right.
There will be no week off or no remote week. Everybody on Zoom, are they clear? Do they have any questions?
Have put it in the chat.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon, if you have that question, just call in. I don't think that there's anything that's changed about Kids Club.
We're going to.
They're going to take that up.
On Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. And Nicole, to answer your question, these aren't additional days at the end of the school year, they're part of their contract days. And the two days in November, the week of Thanksgiving, are non-school days, non-contract for work days.
Well, they're.
The two days in November, the two, Thanksgiving. They'll go to the end of the year. Yeah, it's just like they're snow days or whatever. All right. Our technology coordinator, but. So obviously, you're right.